This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence. I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Mayor Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few of us are getting questions. I know I've gotten a few questions about the plans. So I didn't know if, just for the public knowledge. I'm not a politician. I feel like I'm just an average person in Lee Summit. They have a football field set up inside these homes or their football fields. Our two-car garage is gonna, we're gonna bring the driveway back through here, and it's gonna go right here. And then... So my family has chickens. When we first got chickens, my husband said, "Don't treat them as your pets. Treat them as chickens, because we're going to end up, we're gonna be eating the eggs, and I would like to use them for meat." So don't treat them as your pets. Well, we now have six chickens that I consider my pets, and I will not let him kill for meat. So we live downtown, and we love living downtown. These are my children. The first one's Lincoln, and Amira, and Sophia, and Caleb. This is a great neighborhood. Downtown is one big community, and all of the kids get together, and they play basketball, and we like to walk to the farmer's market. It's an easy walk, probably less than 10 minutes. The farmer's market has always been a very important part of my life and my family's life. As a matter of fact, when my daughter started kindergarten, I dropped her off, and I was going shopping at the farmer's market right behind Lee Summit Elementary. And I was teary-eyed, because she was my first, and she was going off to kindergarten. And Terry, the butterfly lady, the one that's in the purple shirt, and she used to make little butterfly stickers for everyone. She gave me a big hug and was just so empathetic to the fact that my daughter had just started school. How are you guys doing? Doing well. How are you?
Very good.
A lot of the farmers there, my kids have, they've watched my kids grow up. I love Lee Summit in general. I love that it still has a small-town feel, while embracing growth and the arts and diversity. And I feel like downtown specifically embodies that. My kids go to Lee Summit Elementary, and a lot of their teachers live downtown, and a lot of the business owners from downtown live downtown. So when we're out walking downtown, we see so many people we know. I lived in Africa until I was five, and then we moved to the United States, and I've lived in Lee Summit since. Oh, a lot of my childhood, my mom was a single mom. And I feel like I was essentially raised by my community and being on council. And it's just such an important way to give back to the community that raised me.
I say your name.
I'm Mia Prior.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I did this to qualify to the elections.
It's the April 2022. The election process was fun. I got to go door-to-door and talk to people, which is my absolute favorite thing to do, is talking to people and learning about people. I even had people inviting me into their house for dinner, or inviting me back to their house to meet their spouse. And I actually, I knocked on a door, and the lady that answered the door was my kindergarten teacher. So it was a lot of fun. Is it on? Hi, everyone. I'm Councilmember Mia Prior. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I have one on. Can you not? I love being a council rep for District One. I know everyone says this, but District One is by far, in my opinion, the best district. Rain Tree Lake, that's part of District One. I love that community. Actually, my husband and I got married at the clubhouse in Rain Tree Lake. I really love all of South Lee Summit. I love the growth that they're going to be experiencing soon, and that they've already experienced. I wanted to say that if you guys have a concern, please, please come tell us what your concern is, because we can only, we can only address and help with what we know. We're there to kind of bridge that gap, bridge that gap between constituents in the city. And we're the voice of our constituents, and we can go to the city and voice what their concerns are, what their ideas are. So if you have a concern, definitely make us aware. So my big priorities are public safety. That's always one of my top priorities. I've always wanted to make sure that first responders were supported. I think that that's super important to me and to many in our city. But also, I, I wanted to influence the growth in Lee Summit. I wanted to influence the type of businesses we get here, and the type of activities there are to do for our families. If we're gonna continue to grow downtown, how important it is to focus on people that already live here and the infrastructure we already have in place.
Our first presentation tonight is gonna be Assistant City Manager Ryan Ehlum, who's going to talk about that very exciting farmer's market plaza.
But I want to show you the most recent rendering, fly-through video of that. That's really the best way to kind of get a good sense of what this will look like in the near future.
To see it developing into something as big as it's going to be across from City Hall is super exciting to me. I can't wait for it to get built and to start welcoming people into what the farmer's market's gonna be, but also everything else that goes along with that development. You wanna hold it? Don't drop it.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. I'm just an average person in Lee Summit that wanted to be a voice of many that, that sometimes feel like they don't have a voice. Yeah, I'm not a politician. I'm just a mom that cares.
Do these firsts?
Yep.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Sorry for the delay. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Lord, we're grateful for the chance to come together and do meaningful work for our city. Give us clear minds, steady hearts, and a spirit of respect as we make decisions that affect others. May we lead with wisdom, speak with kindness, and always keep the greater good in sight. In your name we pray. Amen.
...to the blood of the United States of America. Consider public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session Number 44. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rader.
Present.
Councilmember Prior.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Member Conk.
Present.
Councilmember Carlisle.
Present.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lopez. Mayor Baird.
Here. Okay, the, I'm gonna need some help, because I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to get my computer reset. So approval of the agenda is the first item on the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt? I have a motion from Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion?
Seeing none, please cast your vote. And I'm an aye. Okay, when all the votes are in, please record the vote. And passes unanimously. Thank you. Yeah, I can't get my computer reset, so this could be interesting for a little bit here. Let's go with, next item is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. I'm an aye. If the votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight-zero. Thank you. Next is the Council Roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in your community. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. So I stopped off before the meeting tonight at the Texas Roadhouse, because the cops were having tip a cop. And they do that for Special Olympics. I'd never done that before, but I think it's something that they do every year, and it was really cool. There were a lot of police officers there and a lot of people. It was a really good group. And of course, they raised money for the Special Olympics, which is neat. And then the second thing that I wanted to tell you about is fires. There's an open house at Fire Station, actually, I don't know the number, but it's at 53, at 50031 Lakewood Way from nine to noon on Saturday. That's this Saturday, July 19th. And that's a brand-new fire station. So if you haven't, you haven't brought your kids over there, it's lots of fun, and it'll be fun for them to go through that open house. So hope you can, hope you can be there. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say we have a couple of downtown events coming up. There is going to be the Downtown Main Street Annual Meeting is going to be tomorrow evening at the Stanley. And then this weekend is the Lee Summit Sidewalk Sale this Saturday. So hopefully folks come out and shop local. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all on the Council Roundtable it looks like. So presentations. We, a few years ago, we decided to make a bigger commitment to, to our, chasing down communications with our state representatives. We try really hard as a council. We do a good job, I think, as a council. But we went a different direction and also added some, some state lobbyists. We have a report here tonight. Zach Pollak is here with Versa Government Strategies, and his partner John is, business partner John is... Is he on the Zoom call? Yeah, and so we've got both of them with us here. Zach, you guys have done a great job for us. Mr. Pollak, you've done a great job for us. And man, we've turned around a bunch of, we've gotten a bunch of investments from the state. Most currently, the three-and-a-half million for the Joint Operations Center. So tell us about that and all the other things you've been working on with us. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers Zach Pollak and John Hensley with Versa Governmental Strategies. Thank you so much for having us up tonight, and really appreciate you allowing us to represent you up at the Capitol. We've really enjoyed it and had a really successful couple of years, as the mayor just stated. This year, there were over 2,600 bills filed across both chambers, and only 67 of those were actually truly agreed and finally passed. And that's including the 16 budget bills. I'm gonna highlight two of the big wins that we've gotten for Lee Summit. First one was House Bill 105, which was the land conveyance for that area right around the old Troop A that, at 291 and 50 there. The governor signed that bill on July 2nd. And I want to thank everybody that came up and talked to your legislators, because I'll be honest with you, without your guys' help, I don't think that would have been possible, because in, for the past six years, a land conveyance bill has not actually passed the legislature. And Mo Dot could not believe how quickly we were able to get it done. Of course, normally, people don't have folks working on land conveyances. But we put our nose to the ground and got this one across the finish line. And in fact, it was probably the last House bill that passed out of the Senate before the Senate shut down. And a big thank you to Senator Bern Sketter and Representative Carolyn Caten out of Blue Springs. The Speaker at first said he would file it, but normally speakers don't file bills. So he suggested Carolyn, and she's been wonderful to work with and got that done for us. The other big one was House Bill 8, which we got the 1.5 million for the, that was for the Joint Operations Center, just pretty much mirrors the same appropriations as last year. But then there was an additional $2 million for the interoperable communication systems. And it survived, I think, $650 million worth of vetoes that Governor Kehoe did. And a big thank you to all of you for talking to your legislators about that, and to Speaker Patterson, and to Representative Carrie Engel. Both of them were instrumental in getting that done and convincing the governor to keep that in there. And actually, I have another present this year.
Nice. May I? State of Missouri. Oh, we've got a House Bill Number 105 signed by the Governor Kehoe. That's awesome.
John, was there anything you wanted to add? Can we hear him? Maybe not.
Mr. Hensley, Zach's calling you out, trying to get you to talk via Zoom.
It's probably not working.
You weren't let in? Okay, could you let... I don't know who's in charge of Zoom, but I don't see Crystal here tonight, Mark. That's all right. You're gonna have to wing it on your own.
I can wing it on my own. That's no problem at all. John did a great job yesterday.
I like the way you guys hand off to each other, and you cue each other up without any notice or preparation. The other one has to start talking, but this time it didn't work for you.
You have to master the art of bus tossing.
Bus tossing?
Yes, yes. House Bill 145, that was the sunshine law that we were following for Lee Summit. And I know we talked a little bit about that yesterday, and maybe some different changes might need to be made. But that bill was signed on, that was signed yesterday. And then again, Senate Bill 145 was signed yesterday, the last day that they could sign any bills, that the governor could sign a bill, and that, you might remember that one as the lemonade stand bill. Anybody under 18 cannot be taxed if they're running a lemonade stand. House Bill 199, it actually... House Bill 199, that actually Representative Bill Faulkner, that also did House Bill 145, it actually started out as a contract with public entities bill. It exploded into a huge political subdivision bill. There were numerous provisions in there that we were watching, still trying to dissect most of it, but I think everything in it was fine, and that was signed on the 10th of July. 567, you might remember that. That was the repeal of Prop A that the voters passed last November. It takes out the incremental steps of the minimum wage, and it also repeals the, repeals the provision relating to sick leave requirements for small businesses. The governor signed that on the 10th of July. You might have remembered hearing about the Section 8 bill, House Bill 595, that says cities cannot make a landlord or prevent a landlord from accepting Section 8 housing. Security deposit can't use how much money their source of income, credit reports, criminal history that would limit the security deposit a landlord can acquire from a tenant. And that one was signed yesterday, too. That was pretty much the things we were watching for Lee's Summit.
Okay, why don't you, we had the legislative meeting this week, yesterday, and you guys did a great job of really talking about our representatives and such. Why don't you throw a softball up there for us to just kind of say thanks to them?
Absolutely, I couldn't say that more. If you happen to run into Speaker Patterson, or, I will be honest, having the Speaker representing the City of Lee's Summit is huge, is huge. But it's not just the Speaker, it was all of you coming up to the Capitol as well, and John and I running the halls every day, but it's those relationships that you guys have with those, especially Carrie Engel as well, and Kemp...
Strickler?
Strickler, correct. They're great, they're great to work with. And if you happen to run by them, tell them thank you, because they've been a great help and a great resource for both John and I.
Mike Serpoy on the Senate side?
Mike Serpoy, absolutely, 100%. He's the one that was sitting in the conference committee during the budget on House Bill 8, saying that one's staying. That one's staying in there. Those two line items are staying in there.
Mayor, we do, we do have Zoom now.
Okay, thank you. So John, if you're, if you can hear us, maybe you've heard us the whole time, I'm not sure, but...
No, I just, I, I, I thank you, Mayor. I just caught the, probably the last three sentences that Zach said there, and I couldn't agree with him more. They're, your delegation, the House and the Senate deserve a ton of credit, and we've been sure to give them our thanks.
Okay, excellent. Kind of go along with that, just to give the citizens and others, you know, even city staff, kind of to know how things work and what we're doing, because they are in communication with, with you, and especially, you know, Public Works and things like that when, when there's a call, such as the Joint Operations Center. But in the past, there's been other things, so, but at the same time, you mentioned the council. We've, we've tried to go and, as a council, and build these relationships, and we do show up in, you know, in force, like we all, we all make it as much as we possibly can. So you think that's important, because that's, that's been something that we've tried to do on, you know, as our part. It's, it's as elected officials for the city. Do you see that with other cities? Or are we exemplary, or are we just like middle of the road? What more could we be doing?
I, I mean, a lot of, everybody does the MML conference, and many council members come in for that, city administrators, but, and I know you were supposed to do that, but it got snowed out and rescheduled. I think that coming up on your own outside of that is way more beneficial, way more beneficial, because it's, you're only talking about your issues. That's the only thing anybody's talking about, and it's not getting taken over by everything else MML is trying to work on, which, there are a lot of things, I love them to death, but there are a lot of things that they get out on that there's no reason for Lee's Summit to go to bat for that, because it's politically not wise.
Okay.
Anything else, John?
Yeah, I would just, I would just say that visiting the Capitol on your own, the way, the way we've done it with you, at least for the last couple of years, has really set you all apart. And for the reasons Zach stated, I think it's really beneficial for you.
Okay, well, we'll continue to do that, but it, I gotta be honest, it helps having you just being, like you said, running the halls and introducing us to people that may not... A lot of times, it's not just the elected official, it's, it's their, their people that are helping them. They're pretty key, and you're helping introduce us to them and such. Oh, thank you. We've got some discussion here. Councilmember Rader?
Did, Councilmember Shields?
That was from earlier.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say that I had the privilege of going to Jeff City, and it was Mayor Baird and Mayor Protim Lopez, was it just the three of us? It was snow, it was snowy and horrible. Yeah, okay, anyway, I was just gonna say that, I wanted to tell you that I really enjoyed hanging out with you guys, because I learned, I learned a lot, and as a first timer, I mean, she's amazing, and Carrie, and all of them, they're great. So I appreciate having them on our team.
It's our pleasure, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just thinking, we have had some really great wins for Lee's Summit coming out of the legislature, you know, we've kind of highlighted the ones from this year. I think, you know, not to distant memory, we had the landfill bill that made it through. We've had appropriations for sewer improvements up in the PRI area in the north part of the city. I may be misquoting that, but...
Yeah, that was a few years ago, but yeah, that was significant. It's 20, it was 11, it was almost 11 million, I think.
Yeah, yeah, and so I was just, just to say that I, I think the investments that we've made in time going to the Capitol and in hiring some good folks to be our voices when we're not able to be there has really been paying off for us. I really appreciate that we're doing that, and I hope we can continue having discussions about what that might look like on the federal level at some point, where we talk a lot about some federal transportation dollars that we could really use on 470. So it seems like these, these investments, it can feel like a lot of money, but it really does make a big difference to the city with, when you see what comes back to us, so, thank you.
Thank you. The, Mr. Pollak, you've got, or Mr. Hensley, you've got, you know, there's a new governor, and it seemed like a few more dollars went out this year, infrastructure, but they were sitting on a lot of money, the state, I mean, a lot of money. So I'm sure they're still sitting on quite a bit. Do you...
It, it has dwindled down a lot, and I'll be honest with you, the amount of vetoes and budget restrictions has a direct relation to what Special Session was all about, and that was the Chiefs and the Royal Stadium packages that were done during Special Session. The Cardinals were not involved in that conversation at all, but you know they're going to take advantage of those provisions. So I mean, there's gonna be a lot of money going out in that regard, and he's gotta, he's, by constitution, he's gotta balance the budget. So I mean, that's why, and I heard...
When you say the Cardinals, you're kind of using political speak, though. You're talking about St. Louis.
St. Louis, yes.
Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody is following you. So in other words, there's a big, there's a little bit of a battle between Kansas City area and St. Louis area, and to be quite honest, they've had the upper hand for decades, where they get more funding than we do in the Kansas City area. So we're due.
Understood, complete, couldn't agree more.
We're due, we're due. Okay, so you, you're, I just wanted to, I just wanted to prepare you that I'll be following up, asking like, how much are they sitting on? Because they were sitting on a tremendous amount of money.
The last number, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, the last number I heard that because of that Special Session, they're only sitting on like $450 million in reserves now?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't pinpoint it on that, but it's mid-nine, mid-nine figures is what I've heard.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they had all those federal dollars that were in, those are gone now, and there's, it's, it's gonna get...
Is that, so I guess, I'm sorry, it's just the details here, and I'll try not to bore everybody, but if you say they're sitting on 450 million, are you saying that they're, that's with them basically via, via... Is that with them line iteming and basically putting in a bucket the stadium money?
The 450 million that's left over, they put that in the reserve fund.
Right, I know, but is that after they've segmented off the, potentially the money for the stadiums?
That is just all in anticipation of that. Like, nothing's drawn out at all whatsoever. It was a guess.
All right, well, I'm gonna, I'll put it in emails so I can formulate my thoughts better. Yeah, no, I know, but they've been sitting on a lot of money for quite some time. So I'm glad that they have the money to possibly contribute to the stadiums and be competitive, I really am. I just wondered, like, what does that mean? Because had that not been, had the stadium money, stadium conversation not happened, like, there's still, I think, would be quite a bit of money.
Yeah, they have over a billion dollars.
Yeah, that we would still be jockeying, that we would still be jockeying for. And the key, though, I think, from what I've learned over the course of time here is that having shovel-ready type of, you know, uses, Joint Operations Center, 291 land conveyance, things like that are pretty critical, and we've been fortunate in Lee's Summit to have those, you know, have that progress as far as development goes, to be able to say, yeah, we do have a need, a public need, public safety is a big one, so. Okay, thank you, sir. I don't see anybody else chiming in. Thank you both for being here and zooming in. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you so very much. It's been an absolute pleasure.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you very much, Council. Thank you, and thanks for letting me zoom in from this parking lot somewhere in the middle of Illinois. Appreciate your help there.
All right, be careful, be safe.
Thank you all, take care.
Okay, that will take us to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing. So we are going to close the regular session and go into a, and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 5A. This is an appeal of a mural permit application denial. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise to be sworn in by the city clerk? Okay, I'm gonna follow the typical public hearing format, so we'll listen to the applicant first, and then we'll do the staff, then we'll do questions. Are you Mr. Staub?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Kurt Staub?
Kurt Staub, small business owner. I am in the process of trying to open up Dave's Hot Chicken at 1808 Northwest Chipman Road. First of all, I want to apologize. I was in the process of building up this location. I was not aware of a mural application that was due for the city. It was not brought to my attention by my real estate agent, by our landlord, or by my architect that got the permitting done through the city. We now understand the code, and I'm willing to, or going to repaint the front city side of the street and get rid of that mural, because that code strictly prohibits any kind of mural on the main street.
So just to, just to be clear, that'd be the part that faces Chipman?
Chipman Road. We were told that we needed to apply for a mural application for the back of the building and the side of the building, which we did immediately, within, I think, 48 hours. We acted in good faith. It was professionally done. I flew in painters from LA. It cost me $58,000. There is, in the painting, which, I don't know, I guess I'll bring up some of the painting if you have not seen it.
Use the visuals, if you would, sir.
Mostly primary, secondary colors.
You, Mr. Staub, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you go ahead and zoom in on, it looks like the, these are the side murals?
Yes, well, there's the front, which will go away.
Yeah, the bottom one is the front one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's zoom in on the top one, then. Does the bottom one's gonna go away? You're just gonna have your Dave's Chicken sign?
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. Okay, that's on, now that would be facing east. Thank you, Mr. Staub. Okay.
So again, if you look at it, mostly primary, secondary colors, very abstract dark. There's nothing, no undertones in here, no sexual, no language, no, any kind of thing that could be any hate-type deal. We did not do the 100% coverage. I'm gonna show some examples of three other stores that just opened up in the nation. Just last week, we have one store in Arizona, one store in Florida, and I think it's Cincinnati, Ohio. And the reason I'm showing this is Dave's started in a parking lot in 2017. It is all about the branding of, it is integrated in our company in terms of this artwork. And again, it's very bright and very turfroil. Yes, it's not the beige that goes along with the, in the issue that we, on our mural application, we were denied because it says it is not integrated with the facade of the rest of the facility. So if I go back to, and zoom in on the artwork, and again, they're saying that this is not integrated with the rest of the facility.
The facility or the, or the rest of the development, the city, the activity center?
The actual wording on there is property, elements of the property.
Property, okay.
The branding like this has, has some merit to help the city as well. We, a 30 to 40% increase in sales, that what that means is an incremental $50,000 in tax revenue for the state and for the city in sales tax annually. So it is huge for a small business owner, for us to be able to carry out this branding. We'll have the cost to have to repaint it, of course. And again, mostly this is primary, secondary colors, everything that you would see on a parking lot or a playground in your city, so nothing that's crazy. You guys also have murals inside your town already. I've got some examples of those. So if you're trying to see how they are integrated with the property, quote unquote, again, that is kind of a vague deal in terms of how it's integrated. I mean, I will admit that our colors are, again, primary and secondary colors, but one could argue that it actually enhances the property. So I guess at this time, I would, I would open up for any questions or that you, any council or the mayor might have.
Yeah, what I like to do is, we'll come right back to you after staff does their presentation, so we can understand why they, yep, why they denied it.
Good evening, Claire Byers, Senior Planner. During the June 12th occupancy inspection for the change of tenant permit for Dave's Hot Chicken, staff found that a mural had been installed on the front, side, and rear facades of the building without a permit. The applicant subsequently submitted a mural permit application for the side and rear facades of the multi-tenant building at 1808 Northwest Chipman Road, Unit A. Upon review, staff found that the mural did not comply with all design standards outlined in the Code of Ordinances and denied the application. The applicant has officially requested an appeal to city council following the appeal process from Code of Ordinances Section 21-101. The applicant is also aware that murals are not permitted on primary facades by Code of Ordinances Section 21-100, and the mural on the front of the building must be removed separate from this appeal application. E-subject property is a multi-tenant out parcel within the Summit Woods Crossing Commercial Development in Zone CP2 Planned Community Commercial. Murals are allowed in all commercial districts within the city, subject to approval. Additional photos of the subject mural from the side, front, and rear, and again, this appeal is only for the side and rear facades, as the mural on the primary facade is not permitted. The Summit Woods Crossing is a commercial development characterized by cohesive architectural design and consistent aesthetic elements. Although the approved preliminary development plan did not specifically address murals, it included building elevations, material samples, and a color palette to reflect this established character. Here are some adjacent building facades within the Summit Woods Cross. Here are some adjacent building facades within the Summit Woods Crossing. Within the development, there is one other example of painted graphics. The Pearl Tavern signage was approved by Planning Commission in 2018. The painted signage is within a neutral color palette that complements both the building and the surrounding development, and was approved in lieu of traditional signage. Here are some examples of Dave's Hot Chicken branding variations. For example, on the left, from Overland Park in Olathe are absent of the mural, as well as some variations in Oklahoma and Nebraska. So it is standard practice for staff to work with the applicants during the permit review process to ensure compliance with all regulations. However, the mural was installed prior to receiving approval, which limited our ability to provide guidance or consider modifications to the proposal. As outlined in the Code of Ordinances, mural applications must meet nine specific design standards. In this case, staff finds that the proposal does not satisfy Design Standard FD. The mural appears visually disconnected from the multi-tenant building's existing facade and lacks cohesion with the surrounding architectural context. Staff finds that the design does not complement the design elements present throughout the overall development, and is therefore not compatible with its established aesthetic character. City Council has authority to approve or deny the appeal by Code of Ordinances Section 21-101E Appeals, and should the City Council choose to approve the mural permit appeal, staff suggests the following language. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Shields, did you want to start us off, or is that from last time? Can you please clear, Councilmember Shields, and then whenever people, whenever I go, Ms. Fowler-Curry, when I go to the next person, would you remove the last speaker for me?
I did, but it looked like there was still two for this one. I did that, I was removing them as we went.
I can't hear you.
I was removing them as we went before, so.
Oh, okay. Well, Hillary Shields is still on there, but she's not wanting to speak. Is she on yours?
She wasn't, I've removed her now.
Councilmember Carlisle's screen is not showing what your screens are showing. Okay, actually, I got another idea. Would you, when you get done speaking, would you remove your name? Alright, that's fine. I mean, I don't even have a computer, Mr. Dunning, and then I've got the screens showing different on everybody, so it's kind of weird, weird night. Councilmember Pryor has a question.
Mayor, if you'd like, I could make Councilmember Carlisle the chair, just so you could see that.
Yes, please. Councilmember Carlisle, you are in charge of the computer as the chair. Yes, be scared. I've seen her run quite a few meetings. Yes, watch out. She goes by the book. So, we'll start with Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is for the applicant. If there's any paint chipping, or you plan on touching it up and keeping it maintained...
Absolutely, now it's part of our application.
Oh, sir, I'm sorry. When you speak, so I can get it, we're recording everything, so would you speak into it?
Yes, absolutely, that'll be our responsibility for upkeep and maintenance, and actually at the end of the lease, to make sure that it goes back to where it was before.
Oh, so if you guys end up leaving the location, then you guys paint it back to the way it was before?
That is correct, that's actually part of our lease with Block.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk. Oh, my goodness, Councilmember Shields.
Apologies for the technical difficulties. So, in Summit Woods, do you have some kind of CCRS Architectural Control Committee? Did this get approved by someone who's controlling the entire development? How does that work, since I assume they have some kind of design standards in place for all the shops there?
I read through that document, and it's pretty lengthy, and it goes back to, I believe, in the late 80s, early 90s, when I was originally on. I don't know how tight they're monitoring it at this point in time.
Okay, so there wasn't like an Architectural Control Committee, or anything like that?
No, my personal opinion, from what I've seen in other markets, is I think there's been a lot of segregation, or moving pieces to that whole development. A lot of different landowners or principals in that whole deal now, so maybe that's, that was not brought, Block did not bring that up, we had, you know...
Mr. Staub, can I interrupt you for one second? Mr. Dunning, you know a little bit about this. Can you, because I do too, but I'd rather you answer this, because that used to be owned all by Red, but that whole front, the whole front where Dave's Hot Chicken is now, and where others are, Block owns some of those.
That is correct.
And so, there's others that are separate ownership that are not part of Red. Does Red still own a majority?
Red does not own Summit Woods anymore.
Oh, that's right, they sold.
Yes.
They sold to another owner that owns it.
That's correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Staub's kind of dealing with an individual, there still are, there still are designs, though, within there. They're just, they're just not enforcing whatever they may have.
Yeah, and they're, I don't want to say they were, they were really preliminary, and they don't look like they've been updated, so.
I guess what, what I'm trying to get at is, when we're determining whether this is cohesive with the development, is there someone who's controlling that development who kind of says, this is the look that we're going for, and we consider this to fit in with it, or not to fit in with it? Or is it, there's no one that's really playing that role at this point?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, fair enough. And then kind of following up on Councilmember Pryor's questions about maintenance, I'm looking at the packet that we were given, it looks like there's a section that has provisions, if a mural is not maintained, requiring it to be painted back to a neutral color. This is probably a question for staff, because I understand that the tenant says that they'll repaint it at the end of their lease term, if they vacate the premises, but if, for some reason, they didn't do that, or they didn't maintain it, or somebody else owns it after them, how does the city enforce that provision? So if the mural became damaged, or wasn't operating as this business anymore, what would we do to bring it back to a more neutral...
Yeah, so the mural would also be subject to all of our property maintenance code and neighborhood services violations, so if the paint was peeling, or did not appear to be in a satisfactory manner, it would be subject to violation. And chipping paint for signs and other features on buildings is a very common.
Okay, so we have procedures in place to handle things if it were to fall into disrepair?
Yes.
Okay, I think those are all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
You guys can definitely clear me now.
Okay, I'll clear you. Go on here. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for the applicant. So, why is Overland Park in Olathe not painted like this?
The brand was very aware of the interior part, and they started, the brand's only been around since 2019. Started to realize how incredibly explosive this could be for sales by doing the exterior. We had already put plans together, and already started the permitting process for Overland Park. We weren't aware of it, so we didn't, we're actually gonna go back to Overland Park and add painting to the outside.
And that's already been approved?
I have not gone yet, I'm, I'm in the process of opening a few stores, so I'm actually gonna go back next year to do that, so.
For, I guess for staff, if we were to appeal this and allow it to move forward, what stops the rest of this shopping center to become a colorful playground?
So, we do have the design standards, there have been a few changes, as mentioned, with the ownership to the design, so we could consider a revision to the preliminary development plan for being substantially different from what was originally approved. And I'll also defer to Amy Nassif.
I think to go along with my question, since Amy's coming up, is, so, if we say no to the next one, what happens to the city?
So, I mean, with this appeal, if we got another mural permit, again, we would, you know, deny it if it come before you, there is precedence that could be set, you know, this evening, by approving this, and we definitely could see other tenants coming in in the shopping center requesting. There's nothing that would stop.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. In the, for the applicant in your packet, I cannot tell where these, the two examples that you gave of the other murals at the top of that page, where all the pictures are, pearls there, and some down...
That's the coffee shop, next to, right on the corner.
On Summer Moon?
Yeah, it's right, yes.
And that, on the left, and then which one is the right one?
It's the same building, just a little bit farther away.
Okay, and then this one is for, the next question's for the staff. So can you tell me again, explain to me again, currently, he would have to remove all of the primary color designs around the entire building. He could keep Dave's Hot Chicken, or is, are you allowing part of that to stay on one part of the building?
Here, let me show you a little closer. So Dave's Hot Chicken has already obtained a approved sign permit, so all of the actual Dave's Hot Chicken logo with the red background, that is a separate approved sign. But yes, if the appeal were to be denied, then all of the colorful elements would need to be removed, on all three sides.
All over the, that side.
As part of our current request. Now, you could request to allow it on one side, but at this time, staff has denied both the side and the rear.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So, to Councilmember Funk's point about setting a precedent, so, what comes to mind is, when we all discussed, I know Planning Commission had a heyday with Furniture Mart with the signs that we allowed, and going over the number and all of that, did we have issues after that? Because we kind of set a different precedence with them, did we have issues with other businesses saying, hey, we want to be able to put more signs up now? Did that cause any issues for other businesses?
It has not, no.
Okay, I just was curious, because I'm thinking, we kind of set a different precedence, but, okay, that was my question, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, so even if we say yes tonight, then the front of the, front of the building automatically goes, correct? So we're only saying, if we vote yes tonight, then we're only saying to the side of the building, as it is?
Yes, the side and rear as it is. So there are standards within Code of Ordinances that murals shall not be permitted on the primary facade, and the only option to request a change would actually be a Code of Ordinances amendment that would be citywide. There is not an avenue to have a site-specific change.
Okay, I was just piggybacking off of Councilmember Rader's, just to make sure, okay, so, and the front will get painted, what color?
White.
White, okay. And then it'll just remain the sign that you'd already said, so it'll just be the side, the side and the rear?
Yeah, staff does suggest that if we want to work with the applicant, we could replicate something similar to the Oklahoma design, where they did retain that neutral palette. So that is one potential option as well, to continue that flow. You can see here where the transitions from spin to Dave's Hot Chicken, it goes from the previous tan to the white. And so while their building permit did show those colors, there's some options there with the color.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that last statement, are you, I'm a little confused on, like, the white is still, is approved?
Yes, they can return to the white. Staff was just trying to think of some retroactive potential modifications, if the applicant wanted.
Okay. On the pearl you example used, you said it was, I can't remember the verbiage that you used, as in the color tone, I think?
Yeah, so this graphics originally came in as a mural application, however, because it's commercial in nature, and we do not permit commercial murals, it instead was proposed as painted signage, and went through the sign application.
Right, I know, but I was asking about the colors that you described. You said that it was approved because of the tones blended in, I think, to the...
Yes, the neutral color palette, yeah.
And also, just want to clarify on the white, on the elevations, that is something that would be reviewed by staff when it comes in separately, depending on the outcome of tonight. So if the applicant's looking for white, that'd be something that we would be looking at, along with the rest of the elevations, and approve and review separately.
Yeah, I wish I could, I wish I could comment on that, because, but I'm in public hearing right now, so I gotta wait till I get outside public hearing to comment on that, but I do have a strong opinion on that one. But I'll wait. I just, I'm just trying to understand what, so it sounds like, on this one, it's a mural, it's on the front, but the colors are muted. Is that what I'm saying?
A little bit, yeah. So this one, when it came in, it went through the preliminary development plan process and zoning process through Planning Commission and Council, and as that was going through, one of the things that brought up with that was that it's kind of got that tan earth tone to it, and has a little bit of a white, which is more of like an accent, and it was treated during that PD process as a sign. And so that's some of the things, and the variations in it.
Not really, okay, I got you. You're just trying to be full disclosure with us, showing that something has been approved on the front of a building. I got you.
Absolutely.
The better examples, though, would be the ones that Mr. Staub has showed us around the town, because we have done other murals. So, would you mind, I don't think we had those in the city presentation. So could you pull up his presentation again and show those? Because I think most of us are familiar with those. Yeah, so we have these murals around town, and so they come before staff, Ms. Byers, they come before staff, you all have, you have criteria that you look at these, and to keep this as objective as possible, because murals are art, right? So you've got pretty, I, this is probably the one topic I've been able to avoid in seven and a half years as mayor, is murals. I don't, I don't want to be up here deciding what is good art and not. I just, that's not, my wife could do it, but I can't. My kids could do it. So, we have design standards, yeah, Ms. Nassif, come up here. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, you're, oh, wait, 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 oh, yes, Ms. Tracy's over there. We could make her come up and answer all these questions, even though she's brand-new. No, I won't do that to you, Ms. Nassif, you're gonna have to carry, carry the water here, so.
Do I?
Yeah, so, there's, we have design standards for these, but these, and these got approved.
Yes, yes, these were approved. Each one was looked at separately. I don't believe Sleep Outfitters is a mural, I think that might have been something different, because that's on a window treatment.
Yeah, what's the top-left one?
The top-left, that's Summer Moon, and it's on the side of...
Of Summer Moon.
Summer Moon Coffee. And it's got the, there's a dentist office right there, and the, is that Red Crab Boil also is right there, too?
Location, cities, like, this is a city?
It's Summit Fair.
Oh, okay.
Summit Fair across, across from Chick-fil-A.
Summit Fair is an extension of Summit Woods, okay.
Yes, and so that was on the rear facade. It also, in these pictures, on the best, but they actually, it does use more earth tones, more softer tones, that kind of blend in with the brick, and they had the accents. Pardon me?
Is that in your design criteria?
There was some design criteria with this. It didn't specifically address murals, again, but they had some colors that they showed in this development, or in that development.
What's the top-right one? I can't see this.
That's also Summer Moon Coffee.
Okay. I know we have more murals than this, because I've seen some downtown.
Yes.
Okay.
We have downtown, and downtown has its own, like, a couple of extra little excerpts in the code regarding murals for downtown.
Boy, your job's gonna get real fun after tonight?
Mine, I thought Tracy Albers was going to, because she was the director now.
Tracy Albers' job's gonna get real fun after tonight, because this is just gonna, you know.
It is.
You're causing us heartache, Mr. Staub. Okay, I'm gonna see, we'll get to the discussion part, and we can hash this out then. So at this point, let me, do we have any exhibits to enter, Ms. Byers, Ms. Nassif? Any exhibits on our end? It's a public hearing, so I need to know if you want to enter any exhibits into the record, Ms. Byers.
Did you have exhibits to enter in the record?
Other than the...
There are no exhibit lists for this type of process, yeah.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Yes, please.
My name's Mike.
Open the microphones, please.
My name's Michael Bostwick, I'm just a local activist group, a leader of one, and I just want to speak on behalf of Dan's Chicken.
Chicken?
Yeah, I believe, I've never met him, I just came here for the first night to talk about something way more complicated than this, and I just want to say that he's, I mean, you guys are smiling and laughing, but he's trying to get his business open, and trying to run that.
Hey, excuse me, excuse me. I'm running this meeting, I don't, we don't need any attitude, so, towards us. We're gonna do a good job, this is not an easy topic. This town, I've seen it get really contested in this type of situation over murals in this community, but we're not gonna take a lecture right now, okay? I'm trying to get through this public hearing. If you want another minute or so, go ahead and take it, but not, not coming after us, okay?
Yeah, I apologize that you feel that way. Yeah, I, I apologize that you feel that that was a mismatch of expectations.
I'm telling you.
What, what, what I was trying to highlight is that this introduces a larger complexity to being able to start a business and to be able to run a business, and the inability to very quickly do that is what I wanted to comment on, because I, I know that the, the board wants to make.
I'm going to be honest, sir, I think you probably hurt him more than you've helped him in the last few seconds, so keep going or don't.
I'll, I'll talk about the backfire effect on my turn. Thank you very much, sir. I hope that you'll recognize small business.
I know it's a public hearing. I just got to get my composure, because I've worked really hard to be in this seat and to champion small businesses, so I don't need lectures on it. All right. I'm not sure if that was for or against, but someone just spoke. Is there any further questions from the council? All right, Mr. Staub, do you want to make any further comment? I mean, you've heard a lot of things here.
No.
Give you the last word.
I just want to let you know, it's, it is definitely something like our branding. I mean, if you think of Best Buy and you think of that big blue wall, you think of Best Buy. You think, you drive by Panera and you see all of their Panera's branding, Dave's Hot Chicken, you think of, of artwork like that. And, and again, I guess, I guess that's really just the undertone of the deal. It is, it is deep, it's ingrained in our business, and it is really a, a big piece of how we came up from a pop-up. The founders started in a parking lot with $700, and they just recently sold the business for a billion dollars, three guys that flunked out of high school. So it's quite the success story, so, for the brand. So I just, I appreciate your time and, and your ears listening to this. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, here for the testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Raider.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say that I certainly understand branding and how important branding is to a business. However, I, we, I mean, we have design standards for the buildings, existing buildings, and I guess what I would just like to see would be that, I know you showed some pictures of the Overland Park building, and it was a little bit less, I would just, what I would hope is we do want, we do want Dave's Hot Chicken here. We, we, we love to have new businesses come to Lee Summit, certainly, but I, I would like for us and hope that the applicant will work with the city staff to maybe come up with something that's a little bit more in keeping with the color scheme there, like they did, like Mrs. Nassif was talking about, the, the more compliant with that, the summer moon where the colors fit, understanding that hopefully those, their colors, they can incorporate their colors in there as well. But I guess that's what I would, I would hope that we would just continue to work with the applicant to find a, a happy medium so that it can work for both them and the city. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess, I mean, first, I, I really just think the colors are kind of fun, like, and I think, you know, having someone come and invest in that building, have a new business go into it that's generating tax revenue and jobs and places people eat, I think that's just all really good. I think we've seen, I'm not going to say full-on struggles with the, that shopping center, but, but, you know, just some kind of turnover and trying to figure out what its next generation looks like as it's kind of matured as a property. And I guess, I, I don't want to put up too many barriers to someone's bringing a business in there that I think is going to be good for the neighborhood. And I'm not going to say I don't wish that the applicant hadn't come to the city before to discuss it, but I understand that, that folks that aren't used to doing business here all the time already don't know all of our procedures. You know, we sit on this dais every day, every, every week, so we're really familiar with this, but I can understand why someone who's opening a new business for the first time in Lee Summit and who didn't have this flagged to them by any of the professionals that they were working with wouldn't have known to ask those questions and, and filed that application. And I think if they had filed it ahead of time, they would have known not to do the front. They could have made it a little bit more integrated with the building in terms of the colors. But, you know, I, I hate to make them go and, and spend a ton of money to, to take this down or redesign it in ways that are probably really going to hurt their business. I mean, like, like the applicant said, they, this is really essential to their branding and to bringing people in, and I assume that, you know, it's a photo op for folks to take in front of that wall. So I just, you know, I, could it have been done better? Like, probably, but I, I think that it looks nice and it's great to see someone investing in that area, and so I would, I would be open to approving this, understanding that they'll need to take down the, the front mural since that's just totally against our codes. But, I mean, to me, the rest of it, whether it's well-integrated is kind of a subjective thing, and I think it, I think it looks nice there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of this. I, I'm glad to know that the front's going to be taken down, and I, I, you already were approved with the color white, so I'm, I'm fine with the side and the back staying how it is. I feel like there's enough empty storefronts in that building that I've seen just stay empty for quite a while, so I'm happy that we have a restaurant going in there, and not only just a, a restaurant, but a restaurant that's going to bring people from other cities after all the TikTok challenges that people have done with Dave's Hot Chicken. And, I don't know, I feel like if, if we allow vape shops that are lit up with super bright white lights, then I'm in support of, of colors on the side of a building, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely wouldn't want to deter someone who's, who's taking the risk and opening a small business here. I, I think we could open up a can of worms tonight, and we're going to be sitting on this dais, doing a lot of other murals here moving forward, which concerns me. But changing out the front, the sides, I've kind of liked the Eden Oklahomawin where they stayed with the neutral colors but integrated their bright colors. If I had my choice, I'd like to see the applicant and staff work together a little more and, and maybe see if we can come to a li, a little bit better flow amongst the rest of the buildings there. So that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so I think it's, it's a, it's an interesting kind of question that is before us. I would say a couple of things that I've heard, you know, to, to be in support of this, you know, whether it hurts the business or it doesn't, I don't, I, I find, I'm not saying I don't believe that statistic, but there's many factors that determine, you know, how well a business does. It could be location, it could be what city, where it sits. To say that, you know, not having those colors would, would zap the business some way or another, I'm not saying it's wrong, it's just, I'd, I'd have to see more data on that. Certainly always support small business. This is a national franchise. You're a successful franchisor. This is not your first franchisee, so, you know, I also think if this was, you know, Bob's Chicken Shack, you know, how might we think differently of it, you know, versus a brand that's known? So I think we have to be consistent in those ways, like trying to think through this decision. Now, I also would say, I drive by that shopping center and it's been dilapidated and it's been vacant, and that Sleep Outfitters is no longer there, and that building looks, looks awful, you know? So it is nice to see someone come in and invest with a new concept, and, you know, just being mindful of, of design standards, things like that. I do think it's, I think I'm going to be okay in support of this, based on the modifications I think we're doing, which is that the front would be the white facade with just the sign and the murals on the back. And I also think, too, like the applicant, you know, whoever leased this to you did not do you any favors of making you aware of certain things that were out there. I certainly do think it's incumbent upon business owners to know those things, but that can be difficult, too. Like, it is a challenge sometimes to know all the different requirements when it comes to design standards, things like that. So I think all in all, it is, it's good. We've seen a little bit of a revitalization in that area with a couple of new concepts that have come in and some renovations there, and I, I think this would only probably help spawn some more growth and, and new users over in that side. So I would be in support of the change and the modification here, based on what we discussed tonight. So thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So I, too, would be in support of the modification with correcting the front and leaving as is all the rest of the building. I will say, to Councilmember Shields' point of, you know, this specific location, I feel there's been a lot of things there, and then all of a sudden it's gone, and then it sits there a while, and this was one where I was driving around in this area, and I go, I didn't realize it was, Dave's Hot Chicken was going in there at the time. And I was driving there, and I go, oh, my gosh, what is that? Because it just drew, it drew me in, and so I drove over there specifically to go see if there was a sign, because I, I didn't look it up yet. And there wasn't, so I took a picture, and I'm like, and I sent it to me, uh, Mia eventually, and I'm like, what is this going to be? So I will say there is something to that, and maybe this is what that shopping center needs, is people to draw them in more, because it's, it's one of our original ones. So I feel like it does need some revitalization, and maybe this is part of it. So I'm okay with it, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that when I saw this coming through, I looked this up online, and I actually went to the franchise page where you can look at every location in the United States. And so I looked at all of them, and almost all the other locations that I looked at all have this fun, crazy, bright design and color on the inside, but I did not see a lot on the outside. And I have no problem with that. I also don't have any problem with, with this being, like, painted onto the glass like it is in Kansas City, Missouri. I, I think that would be fun. With the sides and the back, just having this, these bright colors and no other signage, I, I'm not sure what the purpose is of that. I mean, maybe, I guess it would bring, draw people in, like Councilmember Hodges says, wondering what it is, but I just don't see the purpose of having the mural with, with no other signage on the, you know, side and the back there. So that kind of confuses me a little bit. One other thing that I keep hearing, and I think I've heard it two different ways now, one that the white is not approved and one that the white is approved. So, um, so we need to kind of figure that out. I, I think if it were on tan, it might be a little easier for people, but that's here nor there. So I'm, I'm very happy that the front murals are going to be removed. That was just, that is very head-turning, maybe a little bit of distraction for drivers coming down that road.
Answer your question about the signage on the back, if it's appropriate time now.
I'd have to open the public hearing up. I don't think it's going to deter, change your mind.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I was just going through it, because when I look at, like, this top picture, whatever, you know, those along the side there and then on the back, it's, to me, that's just confusing. That's just my opinion, though. So, but, you know, I'm sure that staff and you guys can work together on this. The front, like I said, is going to go. I don't like the fact that nobody lets you know, and I know that's not on our staff, but surely your landlord should have been able to say something about it to you and given you the heads up on that. That would have been nice. But, you know, for the rest of it, I mean, I can live with it. There are other things that are much worse in this city, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, similar to what I'm hearing, I will just chime in also, the, the white thing, like, I, I understand they want continuity, which I'm all about continuity, but the white kind of looks better than the tan. It's more, it's more in now, it's more, these colors come and go, and I thought it looked better on the white, even though I understand why staff is like, do we make them go back to the tan? I, I understand that. I just, I think the white looks better. I wish the whole, whole entire, all of Summit Woods was, you know, given a fresh paint like that with white. I think it would really elevate the whole aesthetics of it. So I'm all about, usually I'm all about uniformity of signage. I want signs to be the same. I like uniformity. Then you come in with a mural. That's not, it's not like it's a big, bright yellow or purple or ugly green that I might not like. I like pretty greens, but not ugly greens. So this has all the colors, but it's art. And, yeah, I, I'm, again, I'm, I think with everybody, if you take the front down, that meets our code. I'm okay with the art on the side and the back, the mural. I did hear some staff say, or councilmembers say that they maybe would like to see it toned down a little bit, but I'm not, I'm not saying that. As long as it comes down off the front, I think you're going to, you're going to get plenty of attention on the side and the back, that's for sure. So with regard to just going forward, Ms. Nassif, Ms. Byers, we just want to make sure that we're consistent, like you've heard other people say up here. We don't want to make a decision here and then make a, a different decision on a different, what seems like the same one, and we don't want to make the decision just because of the, of the person, the applicant that's making it. So usually that means we got to look at the, that's why I say we're going to have to look at this going forward, because if we need to, I'd rather come back and tighten this up or loosen it up before we get another applicant in front of us, so that we have something to go on. Then we can say, well, yes, we did approve that, but since that time, we've made these, we've made these edits into, in our ordinances. So I think there's enough support to move it forward tonight, once we vote here, but at the same time, if anybody wants to chime in before I call for the vote to clarify, I think we would be, if we vote yes on it, it would be approving the side and back murals, but not, but they have to remove the front one. That's what we would be approving. Or, okay, well, I'll have one of you come up with the motion then. Let me see what Councilmember Raider, can you, or Councilmember Shields come up with the motion? Councilmember Raider?
Mayor, I just wanted to understand.
I was just trying to get it there.
I know, I know, and so I want to better understand, if we vote to deny it, then, then everything comes off of the building, the, the sides, the back, the front. And, and then they turn around and try to come up with colors that are more compliant, because Councilmember Funk and I both said the same thing, that we'd like to see a little bit more compliant colors. But I don't want to, I don't want to shoot him off the, you know, I, I want him to be here, and I want us to work with him.
Well, I've gotten, I've gotten pretty good at counting votes up here, and you two were the strongest, but I was trying to figure out where everybody else was, and I actually write it down as we go where I think they are, so I don't think they're going to, the vote's there to simply deny all of this, but maybe I could be wrong, so everybody needs to start chiming in if I'm wrong.
I don't want to deny the whole thing. I, I wanted, I wanted there to be a compromise, but I, that's why I'm kind of trying to understand.
Okay.
Yeah. So help me, please.
So let me start over. There's an appeal of a denial. So if we vote in favor of the applicant, so if we come up with a motion that says we would like to allow the, the applicant to have the side and back mural, that's what I think staff is saying that they would be okay with, and then get rid of the front mural. So we would be actually voting, depending on how we formulate the motion, thank you, move to appeal a, move to approve the appeal to remove, I can't read this.
Move to approve appeal to mural permit.
To appeal what?
Move to approve appeal to mural permit.
Okay, so the mural permit application.
We did have a slide for you that had the, to help, if that would help. Move to approve the mural permit appeal to allow the side and rear facade mural at 1808 Northwest Shipman for, if you wanted to use that.
So Councilmember, if we did that, then we would be allowing the side and rear facade murals, but not the front. The front would have to come down, come down. And if you want something different than this, such as them to change the back and side, we'd need to modify this motion. Yeah, but I think we could probably amend it, like you're saying. We could amend it after somebody makes the motion. So, do you want to try that?
Sure.
Okay. Do you want to make this motion? Do you wanna make this motion? Councilmember Shields, please.
I move to approve the mural permit appeal to allow the side and rear facade mural at 1808 Northwest Chipman Road, Unit A, for Dave's Hot Chicken.
I have a motion to...
Second.
Okay, approve the appeal. Thank you. The, for the mural permit appeal to allow the side in front, I'm sorry, to allow the side and, and rear, by Councilmember Shields, I need a second. Councilmember Carlyle has seconded it. Now, if, if you wanna vote for it like that, that's, we can have a discussion or we can vote. If you want to modify this, you would need to amend this, if you wanna modify this in some way.
Okay, so Mayor, I would like to modify this to read that the, uh, that the applicant would work with the city on modifying the colors to be more compliant with the existing color scheme and, of the building.
We're gonna be here all night probably talking about this one.
I'm sorry.
No, she wants to make a motion, so if she wants...
Okay, so...
To amend this, but you're gonna have to be a little bit more specific than that.
So, I, I, I mean, I, I don't take offense with this side and the back so much, it's the front that's kinda cuckoo. And I know they're taking down a lot of the colors in the front and, and leaving the white, which, you know, as I drive by there, you know, it's, it, it doesn't look as attractive to me, but anyway, I, I don't know. Well, I, I guess, what's the, I would say, I don't wanna be here all night with this, I wanna get this done.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I know, Councilmember Funk, you felt similarly, do you wanna try making a motion to amend this?
No, I think we just move this forward the way it is.
Okay. Councilmember Lovell, you had a little bit of concern about it, its looks in the back and side. I mean, I wouldn't, I kinda counted you as, as on the other side, but I know that you mentioned some concerns. Do you wanna try to amend this?
I'm good with the way we've got it written.
Then I'm gonna concede.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
I do understand.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor and a second and it's time for discussion. Um, anybody wanna discuss this further? Okay. Uh, then I'm calling for the vote. Please cast your vote. An I am an I. Okay, all votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass eight zero. Mr. Staub, thank you for investing in Lee Summit. Um, if staff, you know, want you to do something, please try to see that we tried to work with you on this, so, um, we do want it to look good and we all drive over there quite a bit, there's a lot of shopping over there to be done, so. All right. Can I get my computer? Oh, thank goodness. All right, we're gonna close the regular session again and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 5B, this is a special use permit for car wash with outdoor facilities. Charlie's Car Wash, 950 Northwest Chipman Road. Charlie's Car Wash LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise to be sworn in by the city clerk?
Thank you.
Keep me plugged in.
I'm on power, right?
Got it.
I got one.
The applicant in front of us making presentation. Are you Mr. Boos?
Yes.
How do you say your name?
Oh, Boos, B-O-O-S. Don Boos, Director of Real Estate for Blue Beacon Inc. and Charlie's Car Wash, 500 Graves Boulevard, Salina, Kansas, Mayor Baird and members of the council. Good evening, I'm pleased to be here this evening to discuss our request for a special use permit. Uh, it's been approximately 11 years since I've had the pleasure of presenting to this body and Charlie's Car Wash is proud to be a member of the Lee Summit community, serving your local residents for over 10 years. Uh, Charlie's is part of the Blue Beacon family of companies. It's a private, family-owned company out of Salina, Kansas, that includes the Blue Beacon Truck Washes, which are the world's largest truck wash company, Lighthouse Properties Hotels and Charlie's Car Washes. Blue Beacon and its related companies have been in business over 50 years and we currently have over 7,000 employees in 39 states. Um, tonight, I'm here to talk about Charlie's. Uh, Charlie's currently has 13 locations in Missouri, Kansas and Oklahoma. Our focus though, tonight is our location at 950 Northwest Chipman Road and we're very proud of this location. Um, I believe it's one of our finest looking locations, features all masonry construction, uh, very well maintained, as we assured everyone it would be 10 years ago, and we maintained it in like new condition. I do like to share with this particular location, there was quite a bit of green space between our property line and the on-ramp to 50 Highway. Uh, early on, we negotiated during construction with MoDOT to obtain permission to maintain and irrigate that property. Uh, even though it's MoDOT's property, it's our front yard and so like most of our locations, it's very high profile and we believe that curb appeal and overall attractiveness is important to our business and I believe it's important to you here at the city as well. It's part of our, the evidence of our commitment to maintaining a high level of excellence, both inside and outside of our facilities. Um, this slide just shows some additional landscaping, um, at our tunnel entrance and some of the detail to the building. Charlie's is a full-service car wash, meaning that in addition to our exterior cleaning that takes place in our tunnel, we also provide interior vehicle cleaning. It's fairly rare in our industry to have interior cleaning. It requires a much larger building, additional specialized equipment and many more employees. This particular location has roughly 60 full and part-time employees and an annual payroll of approximately $1 million, which is quite a bit more than you might expect from a car wash location. Now, over the past 10 years, our industry's changed dramatically. There's been a tremendous increase in the number of limited service tunnel car washes, almost all of them with customer vacuums. 10 years ago, when we opened this location, that trend was starting, but we couldn't find a product that was of high enough quality for our customers. We didn't see the need and our customers didn't expect free, uh, customer vacuums at our locations. But today, given that proliferation of new, uh, locations with vacuums, customers do expect to have them. We only have one complaint at this location, customers ask, why can't I vacuum my car here? So we've learned over those past 10 years that there's two types of customers. There's the one that's happy to pay us to clean their interior and they have no intention of cleaning themselves. And then there's the customer who wants to vacuum their own interior and they have no intention of paying us to clean their interior. So we're trying to react to our customers' needs and demands and at our 13 locations with Charlie's, only two do not have these vacuums. So we find ourselves at a competitive disadvantage and we are trying to solve this situation. So what we're requesting is to add 16 customer vacuum stations to, for our customers' use and to do this, we're displacing 21 employee parking spaces, leaving us with nine standard spaces and two ADA spaces adjacent to our building. Now, we were able to find, uh, alternate employee parking and have negotiated with the owner of the Spire Care building to the north to have a perpetual parking easement for 29 spaces on the north side of their lot. Uh, Spire Care, Spire Care is currently overparked by code significantly and these 29 spaces sit at a much lower grade behind a retaining wall, making them less desirable for Spire Care. We don't need all 29 spaces, but the property owner, uh, was willing to provide an easement over all 29 or none, so this was the agreement we were able to make. Uh, this is a closer view of the site, uh, the, of the, uh, nine new customer vacuums would be on the north side facing, um, uh, the restaurant there, I'm a set of old Chicago, the Texas Roadhouse, thank you. Um, and with another seven vacuums adjacent to our building right on the west side. Um, as with everything we do, we only use the best materials and the finest equipment. Our plan calls for a vacuum building, uh, to be installed to house a central vacuum system. Most of our competitors don't use a separate building, uh, for the vacuum systems. We, we do that in interior structure because it eliminates noise, it extends the life of the equipment, it's a much better visual look and it's consistent with how we operate Charlie's. With respect to noise, the vacuum turbines in the vacuum building have muffler kits and silencers to eliminate the noise. It's a fairly sophisticated, uh, design. Um, this is an elevation of the proposed vacuum building. It's roughly 13 feet square. It will be all masonry, uh, identical to the main building, uh, including identical fascia that's a special metallic product from Firestone that does not rust. Uh, you'll note on the one side, the east elevation, there are two doors. These are stainless steel. Most people don't use stainless steel doors, but this is Charlie's and we only use the best materials. Uh, moving on, here is a site-specific drawing for the, uh, 16 vacuum stations and how they connect to the vacuum building. And, uh, a 3D, uh, view of the, uh, vacuum sta, stations and arches. The vacuum stalls will be 12 and a half feet wide as compared to a nine-foot wide parking stall. Uh, that provides, uh, space for doors to be open without damaging doors on an adjacent Uh, for reference, here is an aerial from the south. Uh, in this view, um, our property is at the lower left and the proposed parking spaces are at the top of the screen. This aerial is from the north and from this perspective, the proposed parking spaces are at the bottom of the screen in our, uh, building to the top right. These are the 29 parking spaces that we're speaking of, clearly a much different grade than the Spire Care building behind them, uh, and that retaining wall, um, is significant. And that's largely why they're probably not using them and willing to, uh, provide us that perpetual easement. These are actual pictures of existing, uh, installations that we have. This is our oldest installation from 2016 in Independence at I-470 and 40 Highway. Uh, just like the stainless steel doors on the vacuum building, we use stainless steel vacuum structures. I think we're the only ones, uh, in the Midwest that use stainless steel for the stations, quite a bit more expensive, but it's consistent with the high-quality materials of our building, handles the elements well and it does not rust. Here is another view of those same from the other side, give you an idea of the arches and how they look. And then this is where my old Chicago thought came from, same location, uh, we're adjacent to an old Chicago, uh, we've been there for quite some time, peacefully coexist without any problems, concerns or complaints. And this is another installation from 2023 at 135th and Black Bob in Aletha. Again, stainless steel structures, stainless steel, uh, trash cans, um, very much, uh, top of the line. Um, the addition of the vacuums is what requires the special use permit. Um, because of your ordinance, um, if a car wash is full service, no special use permit is required. We are full service, will continue to be full service, but because we're adding a use that's used by the customer themselves, the special use permit is required. We plan to add the vacuum stations, but change nothing else, uh, at the location. And then one clarification, um, our locations are open from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM, Monday through Thursday and noon till six on, I'm sorry, 10:00 AM till six on Sundays. Since the vacuums are central, uh, the power to the systems is off, uh, when the location's not open, so these vacuums will not function outside of normal business hours. Again, our Lee Summit location is one of only two in our company that do not have the self-serve free, uh, vacuums. We found that, uh, we cannot operate competitively without them and still meet the needs of our customers. So with that, we're respectfully requesting that you consider and approve our special use permit application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yep, we'll hear staff and then we'll have questions for you.
Good evening, Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 21.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 21.
Mr. Boos had mentioned, uh, the application before you is for consideration of a special use permit for the introduction of outdoor self-service, uh, vacuum stations that, uh, primarily located here, just off the northwest corner of the existing building. Uh, the resulting 16, uh, stations, uh, will be born out of the removal from, of 22 existing, um, parking bays, if I'll highlight these here in a bit. Uh, so there are eight spaces here just off of the northwest corner of the building and there are, uh, 14 parking bays due there. Uh, most of you, I'm sure, are familiar with the Summit Fair, so it's just east side of the highway from the Summit Woods Crossing Shopping Center that we were just talking about with the previous application. Uh, Charlie's Car Wash anchors that northeast corner of the intersection of Chipman Road and 50 Highway. So here's this close-up, um, shows you the existing conditions. It's a little bit more than a 13,000 square foot building that sits on just under two acres. Um, here, you can clearly see the circulation that runs in a counterclockwise motion through the site and the, uh, 22 parking spaces that I had previously discussed are here again, off the northwest corner of the building. At the time of, uh, planning commission, there, there were, there were no concerns, there was only one question, asking for a little bit of clarity on the circulation around the reconfigured parking area just off to the northwest corner. Um, and some clarity was provided on that meeting. Uh, there was just a little point of confusion just based on some of the, the grading or, or the line weights used on the, on the drawing on the site plan. Um, yeah, so this one kind of illustrates exactly what we're, we're talking about. So, uh, over here in this kind of reconfigured vacuum station area, there will be two-way traffic. Um, as I mentioned, traffic circulates in a counterclockwise motion with vehicles exiting out of the tunnel off that north side. So vehicles that wanted to, that would like to proceed to the self-serve or the full-service, um, interior cleaning stations would then make an immediate right, uh, or left, rather, travel south into the building. Um, anyone who's looking to access the self-serve stations would continue, uh, left out of that and there's a little two-way traffic area where, um, these eight spaces, eight parking, um, vacuum station bays are located and you've got the, the additional 14 on the north side of the building. Uh, Mr. Boos had highlighted the location of the 29 off-site parking spaces from the, uh, displacement of the, um, employee customer, well, I guess it'd be primarily really employee parking areas. So here in this magenta color, you can see the, the route that would be traveled by employees using the off-site space. Uh, there's about a 450-foot, uh, distance, travel distance there by foot, which would be no different than some of the distances traveled in some of our larger, um, retailers like, to like a Target or Walmart. Uh, the special use permit, uh, that is requested, staff is recommending a, uh, a period of 20 years from the date of approval, um, and just to reiterate, uh, the point that was made, um, so right now, under the current operation, it's a 100% indoor facility, there is no special use permit to allow the operation as it currently sits. It's only the introduction of this outdoor facility or services that necessitate the special use permit. So staff is supportive of the period for 20 years.
Thank you, sir. All right, any questions for staff or the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Shields?
So I, um, since this is right next to a highway there, I assume that the noise from the, um, the vacuums isn't any worse than what the surrounding businesses and everybody's getting already from, from being on a couple of busy streets there, is that right?
Uh, that, that is correct, yes.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Well, um, could you switch the chair back to me? Thanks.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Clear the current speaker. Uh, Councilmember Carlyle?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, so staff, thank you for showing that path, I guess the employees are gonna get from the, um, new parking spaces. Yeah, thank you. So is that sidewalked? Is that, is that like a true sidewalk path? I, I ask because I know that this area is very congested with cars and I don't want anybody getting run over trying to walk from there to there to go to work. So is that, is, is it like a true sidewalk path where they're gonna know this is where you go and cars are gonna have to yield to them and all of those things?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then for the applicant, and I'm pretty sure I misheard this, but did you say that your operating hours are Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday. I was very confused thinking you were not open on Friday and Saturday. Okay. Um, and you don't think that having these... And you don't think that having these self-serve bays that I know that you said won't be operating when you're not open, but you don't think that's going to be any kind of a nuisance hazard for your area?
I don't, especially here. And there in 11 other locations that we have without any event.
Okay, so you don't have problems with people coming around there right now?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition or in favor of the application? Please come forward. Are there any additional questions from the council? Mr. Booth, do you care to make any further comment?
I just want to say we're very pleased to be in Lee Summit. It's been an excellent location for us and I was actually impressed with how you handled the previous item before you, so.
Tough stuff sometimes, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was wondering the same. Hearing no further testimony, I'm going to close the public hearing and reopen the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Yes, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. So I don't know if you remember, Mayor, when we were at 30 Hop and we met the guy that maybe was a manager there? I don't know. And I said, can you guys please bring vacuums? Because this is what I've been waiting for. So you guys are the only car wash, I drive a minivan, and you're the only car wash in the entire city that gets the back of minivans, which is a huge deal for minivan moms because, yeah, the one I currently have a subscription to, I do it because they have vacuums, but they don't get the back of my van, so it's frustrating. So I'm excited to re-sign up for you guys as soon as you get the vacuums in, so I'm in support of this. I hope you guys have little towels, because the one I currently belong to, they have like little towels so I can wipe the dash too, which is nice.
As of right now, we do not.
Okay, and I don't know what the solution is that they have it on, but like it takes away fingerprints from my windows too, so. Well, I'm excited for the vacuum, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I think Charlie's is a great car wash. You guys, your landscaping and everything looks beautiful, the customer service is great, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad you're going to add the vacuums, and you are the only ones that I can go to because I have convertibles. Most of the car washes, you can't go with a convertible, so thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have, who gets this one? Councilmember Carlisle, would you please read Bill Number 25-127?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move, did we, yeah, okay. I would move Bill Number 25-127, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a car wash with outdoor facilities in District CP2, Planned Community Commercial, on land located at 950 Northwest Chipman Road for a period of 20 years, all in accordance with Article 6 of the Unified Development Ordinance for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, be second read.
All right, we have motion to move to second reading. Bill Number 25-127 by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please accord the vote. Passes, it'll go to second reading, next meeting, and thank you for reinvesting in Lee Summit, so. Okay, we are on public comments and we have a couple of speakers tonight. Ms. Waller, or Waller, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, please come forward. All right, on the public, it was asked, public comments, it's where the public may address the council on any matter listed in the council agenda for the meeting or directly related to the operations of City Lee Summit, except for those matters that are the subject of a public hearing, which we just had two of those requiring that testimony be sworn in. Each person wishing to provide public comment will be given three minutes. Any person wishing to provide handouts or information materials to the mayor and council shall provide the materials to our city clerk, who will then distribute them to the mayor and council. All right, Ms., did I say your name right?
Yes, you did.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight because I just want to add to the records, a call for action for substandard investigations by the Lee Summit Police Department. Standards that I feel are crucial in maintaining public trust, professionalism, accountability, integrity, failure to protect, falsifying police reports, and impartiality without bias or prejudice. Lee Summit has had two cases of child abuse. In the first case, the detective made two phone calls and closed the case. His own emails for his case records, he indicates, "I've got nothing." You have to do something to have something. The second case, the child abuse, the victim had a forensic interview. The child revealed that her daddy was going to kill her mommy, pointed to the picture of another individual, and told the interviewer, "Not him, he's not my guy." And the detective omitted those two key factors from his police reports, changing the course of the investigation. A failure to interview witnesses and all the alleged suspects has also changed the course of the case. Frustrated with the lack of investigation and discrepancies, Sergeant Schumacher was contacted, who included Detective Albin, in a conversation that was recorded. Detective Albin stated, "It's not a crime to alter and tamper with evidence, it's a civil matter." How many cases has Lee Summit's detectives used this logic? The third case is a felony forgery, which signatures were forged on court documents that were filed with the courts. A document examiner deemed the signature a forgery and the expert testified in courtrooms across the U.S. and other countries. Detective Reese refused to interview witnesses and most likely didn't bother to interview suspects. The victim disclosed numerous times threats of being told what to say and no one listened to the victim. Eventually, the victim quit talking and went into survival mode. Thanks to the substandard investigations, the victim is now suicidal. In closing, we need law enforcement to protect us. It's a tough job with many dangers, and I understand these more than most because my son is a sergeant with the Highway Patrol. I also know when things are not being done correctly. We have no faith in Chief Forbes and the detective unit. Out of four major cases, they have not been able to solve one single case, and when children are involved, that is unacceptable. I am requesting an investigation into the four unsolved cases by an unbiased agency other than Lee Summit to uncover the issues that are plaguing this agency that have failed to protect a child. That is, everyone agrees is being abused. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Mr. Bostwick. Bostwick, I'm sorry.
You ready? Okay, so my name is Michael Bostwick, I'm here tonight as part of a activist group that I'm getting started and starting to build called Children of Prometheus. We just heard someone very upset about their parents and custody. I had no idea that was going to be talked about tonight. My actual intent tonight was to discuss an issue that's complicated around the city's management of a sewage system and the longer-term consequence around that. The core issue of the actual sewage issue is relating to the pass zoning and the chapter codes, and the problem is that the city's not following good-faith efforts to just get the actual sewage maintained properly. I've taken very far steps, I've tried to do a lot of things. The Neighborhood Service Division probably knows me by name because I've had to continually deal with them policing things. One of the things I'm trying to actively work on with my group is verification of claims. I'm sure a lot of people have dealt with litigation and there's two terms I want to introduce tonight, ex-post and ex-anti. So those are different scenarios for when you evaluate things. One of the most valuable lessons I've learned from any conflict is that you can understand it through looking at a mismatch of expectations. So everybody has their own different set of expectations and what you're trying to do is navigate what the right choices are. My hope is that the city will look into the covenants versus the city codes. There's a little bit of gap there in the semantical nuance that needs to be resolved and mitigated. Since there was someone that was talking about the Lee Summit Police Department and that area, I'd also additionally add that the Lee Summit City Police Department provide express transparency on their involvement when it comes to children. The Missouri courts have a deep problem with claims verification and I have a larger conversation around mathematics and closed-form expression verification relating to large language models that would allow us to very quickly verify when people are making false claims, but those things are very different. One additional note I would make for you, your honorable mayor, is to look at, there's a very good TED Talk called "Top Six Rules to Reduce Complexity," and it talks about like why we don't share TVs with our wives. So hopefully that interests you and you want to look into that. But I would also ask that you guys expressly write some codes that limit the authority of the Neighborhood Service Divisions. It's become like a police agency to be able to meet what the city council wants rather than a group that's just designed to make sure people mow their lawns and do their own things that ends up feeding a financial network. A lot of us are looking for a common motivation and what we're motivated by is financial incentives, and there's a lot of issues that aren't financially motivated, protecting children is one of them. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, are you guys needing a break before we continue? Short break? Or do you want to continue? Do you have to go? Yes, all right. This is when we usually take a break, is right after the public comments, so I'm going to go ahead and take that now, I'm sorry. We do have, we have your presentation, I want to make sure we give it full focus, so. We'll come back in, we'll come back at 8 o'clock.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon-cutting, so we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour.
This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or doing reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms to write reports and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5 o'clock after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else as long as we're not running calls, and this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store when you see fire trucks to the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift as well as their own pantry, and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours, the opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station, and the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here or numerous other people working at this station, that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better, and that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible so that way when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters, so in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we can and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal when we run calls and we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. You see firefighters, where the big air tanks on their backs and they use those in a fire, we can come back and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here, we work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational, and this gives us the capability to do that, again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can to run a call throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine, and what this does is gives us the capability when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear, again, kind of getting back to that cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally, is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts, as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station, you come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day, and then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city, therefore, we wanted to provide the best care and the closest units we could, so we moved one of our ambulances up and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3, and that's the fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. The last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on shift every day and they split the city, and this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city, while our chief of Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city, and they divide it up evenly.
Thank you for going on a tour with us today. If you have any other questions about the Lee Summit Fire Department, please go to our webpage at lsfire.net or follow us on Facebook at Lee Summit Fire Department.
Thanks for joining us on the tour.
Hello and welcome to Meet Me at the Market, your development update on Green Street. Green Street Market is enclosed in exterior work including roofing, glazing, tinting, and brick facade will be added soon. Wooden panels are up where glass doors will be, and workers are constructing utilities inside. When completed, a catering kitchen and concession area will be on the southwest side of the building and bathrooms will be on both ends. Construction of the outdoor canopy adjacent to Green Street Market is ongoing. The steel beams and crossposts will support a translucent polymer roof covering the Green Street lawn, offering year-round programmed activities, events, and performances. Concrete has been poured in front of City Hall and pavements, hardscapes, and landscaping will soon begin for Green Street growth. The Streetscape Pavilion will serve as the gateway to Green Street with an art walk featuring art from acclaimed artists, an immersive kids playground, outdoor seating, and gathering spaces. More public art is coming. Four local artists have been selected for the City Hall public parking garage and three finalists have been chosen for the digital mural for Green Street Market. Be on the lookout for an announcement very soon. Third Street from Douglas to Green intersection is expected to open on January 30, followed by Green Street to the Johnson Street intersection in March. That's it for this episode of Meet Me at the Market. For more information on the project, visit citive ls.net/greenstreet.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
The city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard.
We feel valued, we feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing, it's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just a dog.
It's more than just a dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crises, they do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring, so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them, and say, 982, then route, officers in route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So, what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do, when you call 911, is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago on my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So, at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, and getting to know, who comes around and sees you? Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them, and showed them, you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
Small targeted piece of the campus. The project under that plan was completed from 2004 to through 2014. The 2015 plan was a campus-wide master plan, and it was to replace aging and dilapidated units throughout the campus. It was a 10-years at 100% abatement followed by five years at 50% abatement. There was no tax base reduction. We had our base pilot set at the 2014 taxes that were paid of 536,000. With the concept of this plan, we had the reimbursable costs for the greenfield restoration. And so we were looking to get reimbursed for the green, the items noted on the screen there, site preparation, demolition, soil remediation, and relocation cost. The project completed under the 2015 plan, total cost was 105,000, and the reimbursable costs incurred under this plan was 7.9 million. Oh, sorry, 105 million, we'll correct, 105 million dollars of project cost and 7.9 million of reimbursable cost. The last project added to the 2015 plan was in 2024, so the final year of abatement under this plan will be in 2038. I'm going to turn things over to Maria, who will cover the plans, the projects completed under the, under the plan.
Thanks, Steve. As you can see by the map that Anthony showed before, the campus encompasses a wide variety of living units. The 2004 plan was very isolated, and the 2015 plan was scattered across the campus in three major areas. The first is our villa program, phases one through nine, where we took 85 obsolete cottages, demolished those and replaced them with 59 market-relevant villas. The old cottages had steps and accessibility issues inside the homes with narrow doorways, especially to the rest, the bathrooms. We had no garages and a lot of foundation issues, and those fell out of favor with the market. In yellow, you see where we replaced a 28-unit obsolete residential care facility with a new assisted living facility with 25 units, and that was in order to meet the state regulations for assisted living. And in blue, a facility that many of you have probably been to before, the Meadows Apartment Complex, where we had our worst units wrapped around our biggest asset, which was the green space of Westminster Meadows and adjacent to the golf course and park, and pond, sorry. And we replaced those units with 156 new apartments and a number of very relevant common spaces. So here's just a quick look at the villas, where we took down 98 units, replaced them with 59, but just only 5,000 square feet difference, and that's because we created larger homes that were more desirable by the market, step-free entries, garages, accessible restrooms, and larger kitchens that were desirable to meet the needs of the market. Here's a picture of our assisted living. Again, there's been a growing demand for assisted living in the Lee Summit area. We have expanded multiple times. This allowed us to meet the needs not only of the residents on our campus, but as well as residents who moved directly from the Lee Summit community. That facility opened in January of 2020. And then the Meadows Complex, again, 156 market-relevant apartments. These have been very, very popular and remain full. We have two restaurant venues, a aquatic center, a fitness center, and multiple meeting areas. Some of you may have had meetings in those buildings and have been very successful projects and allowed us to, again, meet a very real need in the Lee Summit market for senior housing.
This slide shows the value of the abatement, again, at 7.9 million. The reimbursable cost paid through 2025 is 1.9 million. So you can see that the, the last item there is the estimated total reimbursable cost paid during the life of the 2015 plan is projected to be 3.9 million. So that would be 49% of the reimbursable cost. So there's some issues presenting, preventing the full reimbursement under the 2015 plan. Two main ones are that the 15-year total abatement period is shorter. The second item is that the individual project reimbursement maximums are part of this plan. And so we have some of the projects that are actually, the savings is exceeding the reimbursement cost, and so it's limited. And so that is causing the, the amount of tax savings to be reduced. John Knox Village is not asking for additional assistance with the 2015 plan for the project, but we'd like to see the city council consider the effect of these issues on the reimbursement levels for the future projects.
So when you looked at the previous maps, you could see that in 2004, we had a very targeted area of the Courtyard Complex, and then in 2015, we did some villas, the assisted living in the Meadows. We have a large number of units that really are not meeting the demands for the market in a number of different ways. So we have three apartment buildings that make up the Country Club Complex. The average square footage is 614. There are no washers and dryers, no dishwashers, very small kitchens, very small bathrooms. Those three buildings combined are only 54% occupied. And even if we tried to modify them with interior finishes to, to make them a little bit snazzier, really the size and floor plans of those are not well-received by the market. Those buildings also only have single elevators, so if an elevator goes down, we have issues with accessibility for people who may have mobility limitations, having to use the stairs or request assistance from our public safety officers. These buildings have mansard roofs, and you may have seen some of those buildings when you've driven up or down Prior Road. Not the best types of housing to face the public there, as you can see. We also have 104 cottages. One is pictured here. Those average 804 square feet. Those are just generally deteriorating. The infrastructure is bad. The floor plans, again, are very choppy. The bathrooms and kitchens are very small. Even if we tried to, you know, renovate the interior, they don't have garages, they have steps. Again, they're rejected by the market, and that's why our occupancy is so bad. And even sometimes when we offer deep discounts to try to entice people on a price point standpoint, they still reject this project, or these products. And the maintenance costs are extremely high. The standards for construction were different in the 70s, and certainly the market was very different in terms of what seniors need and want from the 70s. So we have an ambitious plan ahead. We would like to do additional villas. Those would be indicated in the red. So we showed you some that were done as part of the earlier plans, but we still have a number to go. Demolishing 97 obsolete cottages, again, which are largely vacant, replaced them with 82 new villas. In the gold, there is the Courtyard E building. That is a building of 52 new apartments. And we'll talk, we'll show you a couple pictures here, but this is getting ready to open with our first move-in in September 8th, and we're really excited to bring 52 new apartments to our campus. The area in the bluish-purple down at the bottom is our clubhouse replacement. So we had an old 1970s-style clubhouse. The pool was deteriorating, literally rigged up to try to keep it operational during swim season. We've torn that down. We're building a new clubhouse with a meeting room, pickleball courts that can be also used for basketball, table tennis, exercise classes, classes, and the like. And we're very excited to be bringing that new facility to our campus. There is definitely a movement toward increased wellness and fitness among today's seniors, and we're excited that we can better meet that need and expectation. The green area there, which is a large 25-acre swath of our campus, goes from Chipman to O'Brien, and east to west from Prior to Shamrock. It includes the, a lot of those dilapidated cottages that I showed you, as well as those three apartment buildings. We'd like to take that all down and redevelop it with market-relevant floor plans, including towers and apartment towers and villas. So just a little bit about each of those. Again, we have what we think is 12 phases of villas left to go. Phase 10 opened earlier this year, and phase 11 will open later in the year. Those all sold in a very short period of time. Here is the D building that we did as part of the 2015 plan, and the new E building will look almost identical to it. The net deposits of 46 has been surpassed. We have 49 deposits for the 52 units, and I was notified by text that we got a hold on number 50. So we are hoping to have all 52 units sold when we open on September 8th, and we're very pleased with our ability to meet the, that middle market with that apartment product.
So the 2005 plan does have some similarities to the 2015 plan. There's no tax base reduction. The new base pilot would be set at 748,000, which is the taxes paid in 2024. And it had the same concept of the greenfield restoration, so the payment savings would be limited to the recoupment of the reimbursable greenfield restoration cost. There are some proposed differences in, in this plan. We are requesting a longer abatement period, 25 years with 10 years at 100% and 15 years at 50%. We're also requesting that we group all the reimbursable greenfield restoration costs and not have individual parcel caps, which would remove that issue we had with the 2015 plan. With these changes, the village estimates that the 2025 plan will result in 80% of the reimbursable greenfield restoration cost being reimbursed, in contrast to the 49% that's being reimbursed under the 2015 plan. This last slide just compares the 2015 plan assumptions. The second column is the actual results from the 2015 plan, and then the third column is the 2025 plan, and then the final column to the right is the 2015 plan actual plus the 2025 plan. I'll just go through a few of the rows. Line six is the reimbursable greenfield restoration cost. You can see the 2015 plan assumptions were 16.5 million. The actual came in at 7.9. The new plan for 25 is 12.6 million. And then item seven, the estimated actual reimbursement of those reimbursable costs are shown there, and you can see line eight then is the percentage of reimbursement. So the 2015 plan assumptions were 70%. The actual for 2015 is 49%. The new 2020, the 2025 plan would be 80%. And the final row there shows the percentage of total investment reimbursed through this, which is dividing the line seven divided by line one, the investment that we're putting into the village. And it's 13% was the original plan for 2015, 4% was the 2015 actual, and 6% is the 2025 plan. That completes our presentation.
All right, thank you. We'll hear from Mr. Buscheck and then come back with questions.
Good evening. David Buscheck, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. I'm going to start with a bit of the history recap. There's four points that I'd like to talk about before I get into the numbers and summarize the incentive request for you. So the first is a little bit about the history of this plan. I'm starting with this map. I like to see a map that has the lines on it, so you can see cleanly what the boundaries of the redevelopment area are as approved by the city council. And there's some other maps that we can talk about later, depending on how the discussion goes. But the first point I want to mention is the legal foundation for this incentive package that's already been provided by the city council is blight clearance. Blight is the focus for the legal foundation of this incentive request. And an argument could be made that this may be blight clearance in its purest form in the sense that when the city council has approved incentive packages in the past for blight clearance, that can really mean two things. Blight clearance meaning take the ground, get it down to a greenfield state, which is the focus of this plan, which I'll talk about more as we go through the presentation. And then the second that's recognized under Missouri law is building something to replace what was there. So think of your typical TIF projects or a shopping center rehab project. If you're providing an incentive, the blight clearance mechanism can both be clearing the blight, what's there today, and then making sure the new facility is built, or the new shopping center, the new store, the new apartment project, whatever it may be. If blight clearance is the focus, demolition and then replacing it with something is usually our, is our focus. In this case, the only thing that this compensates John Knox Village for is the demolition costs to get the project, to get each parcel down to a greenfield state. So blight clearance being the focus, and this plan, as it sits today, only reimburses John Knox Village to get each parcel down to a greenfield state for them to construct what they've constructed. There was a 2015 blight study that accompanied the 2015 plan that was approved by the city council, and the basis of that blight study was age of the buildings, obsolescence, outmoded design, and physical deterioration. Those were the primary focus of that blight study. And really, my memory from 10 years ago was it was really focused on obsolescence. I remember going through some of these structures, I think the city council at that time toured the structures, and the focus was really obsolescence, meaning John Knox Village was doing an adequate job maintaining the facilities the best they could, given their budget, their economics, and so forth. But after decades, the building just become obsolete, doesn't have the amenities, doesn't have the width, the size of the rooms, et cetera. So that's, that's, that was the focus of the 2015 plan. Second, then, I'd like to focus on the mechanics of how this works. So in the initial presentation, they mentioned parcel-by-parcel implementation, and that's an important feature of this plan. Here's how Chapter 353 works. There's a redevelopment corporation that was created by John Knox Village many years ago. To initiate tax abatement, when each parcel is ready to be developed, they transfer that parcel to the redevelopment corporation, and that's what triggers tax abatement. And then they transfer it back to John Knox Village. So most of the incentives that you've approved in the past, the city remains the owner, and we lease the property to the, the end user, and that's how we implement the tax abatement. In this case, it passes through the corporation, goes back to John Knox Village, and that's how they implement this, as they redevelop the campus on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We agreed by contract what the blight clearance cost would be for each of those parcels. So the contract that was executed in 2015 has a, has an itemization of the blight clearance costs associated with each parcel that the city and John Knox Village agreed to by contract. And so when they are finished with their blight clearance, the city reviews and certifies that that demolition has occurred, and that's what qualifies them for the blight clearance costs to get the property down to a greenfield state. So the compensation mechanism is in the form of getting the property down to a, a greenfield state where it's ready to develop. And then the abatement serves, as I, as I mentioned at the beginning, for the blight clearance. So the specific costs that go into the itemization of costs that John Knox Village has reimbursed for, it's, it's everything that goes into preparing the site to get ready for new construction. So the site prep, any environmental remediation, demolition primarily, if there's any soil remediation, and then any relocation costs associated with the, the relocation of residents during the construction period. So those are the costs that John Knox Village is reimbursed for on a parcel-by-parcel basis as they've initiated the tax abatement on each parcel. And then we've talked in the past how, of all of the incentives that you can provide, there's really three benefits to the developer. One is cost reduction. Second is a new revenue stream, such as through tax increment financing or new sales tax. And the third is my catch-all, which is kind of goodwill to the project, enhancing the notoriety. They're in front of you, in front of the city council, talking about it, so we're all more aware of it. In this case, the only benefit from this incentive is cost reduction. However, what's unique about this program and what we put together in 2015 is it also serves as a reimbursement mechanism. So we've agreed by contract what the costs are to get each parcel down to a greenfield state, and when they do that, they've qualified for reimbursement of those costs. And then we tally up the tax abatement every year, and the value of that tax abatement is what reimburses them for those costs that they've incurred to get each parcel back down to a greenfield state. That's how this incentive package works. The third point is there's a pilot payment that's made each year, which is basically, you could call it a hold harmless payment. In the case of the 2015 plan, the pilot payment is equal to what the taxes were in 2014 for the entire campus. So as they started initiating tax abatement on a parcel-by-parcel basis, every year since 2015, the taxes have been leveled. The taxes have not reduced below what they were in 2014, once the incentive started. And they are proposing to basically re-up that pilot, and I'll explain what that means when we get to the numbers. And then the fourth, fourth key issue is timing. As they've noted, this is the last year to activate tax abatement for any parcel. So the main constraint, and the real reason that they're here tonight, is because next month is the last month that they could initiate tax abatement under the 2015 plan. And so they're essentially requesting a continuation of this plan, and I'll explain what that means when we get to the numbers. But they're, they're time-limited. This is the last year that they could use this plan. And then any parcels that go into tax abatement, it stays in a tax-abated state for 15.
You do mean at 100%, right?
Excuse me?
You say it's the last year, but you mean at 100%.
So this would be the last year that they would be able to initiate tax abatement on any parcels?
At all?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so, again, that's the reason, that's, I think that's the primary reason they're in front of you, to re-initiate this program for a continuation of this throughout the remainder of the campus. So the real question for you is, and while we're having the conceptual presentation, are you agreeable to the continuation of this for the remainder of the campus? That's essentially what they're asking. So now I will get to the numbers. When I started preparing for this presentation, I looked back at everything I had done in 2015, and I had not started using this format, which you're familiar with. So what I did is I prepared the green chart. This is, this is the chart that I would have used if I were using this format back in 2015, which I wasn't. And so you'll see that the only tool they're requesting is Chapter 353 tax abatement, which is cost reductions, but I explained to you how we're essentially reimbursing them for their qualified demolition costs and site prep costs. The applicable rate, and this is maybe a question you just asked, Mayor, it's 100% for 10 years and then 50% for the next five years on each parcel as it's activated, keeping in mind that this is the last moment they could activate, next month. And so when each.
There's like another column that should say they, they have to activate it within 10 years?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. And then one each, once each parcel's activated, it can last for up to 15 years. Purpose, reducing their costs, achieving a greenfield state for each parcel. So when the plan was initially approved, they had calculated that their financial benefit, if everything played out as planned, would be about $16.5 million, which would be 15.7% of their total project costs. So as approved, these were the metrics. This is the table that I would have showed you in 2015 if I had prepared a table like this. Then the second table, this is how the plan has played out over time. So all of the initial parameters are the same. However, due to all the various factors that they could explain to you, if you're interested, they have not redeveloped the campus as fast as they originally anticipated. And so the estimated financial benefit that they have received is this amount. And that is a function of the parcels that they've placed into tax abatement and the costs that they have qualified for reimbursement through the program that I described to you. And they've incurred 105 rounding, 105 million dollars in costs to achieve this benefit. So the actual benefit that they've received through today from this program is about 3.5, 3.7% of the total actual project cost they've incurred to date. This table then adds what their request is tonight. So the main differences you'll see, instead of 15 years, they're requesting 25 years, which is an additional 10 years on the 50-year abatement. So they're requesting 10 years at 100%, and then 15 years at 50%, which is the maximum allowed by the Missouri Constitution. The purpose is still the same. The mechanics would still be the same. And they are estimating then that their financial benefit from using this structure, if you approve it, would be about 12.6 million dollars. They're anticipating that they, for the remainder of everything that they just showed you in their presentation, estimated to cost 171 million dollars. And so if everything plays, if you approve this and everything plays out as they're projecting today, the total financial benefit would be 7.4% of their estimated total project cost. That is the request tonight. The next two slides I have are really helpful, helper slides in case we need to get into comparison of other projects, so I won't go into those. And I think that covers everything that I wanted to in my initial discussion. So hopefully you have an understanding of what the request is and the mechanics, and happy to answer questions and listen to your discussion.
Okay. There's a lot of numbers and spreadsheets on this one. As in, you're saying that it's per lot or per, is it per parcel?
Yes.
And you've got a spreadsheet that says this is how much it's going to cost to take this parcel to greenfield?
Correct. So the, the original contract has an attachment to it that itemizes exactly what you're saying. It has the agreed-upon demolition and other site prep costs to get that parcel down to a greenfield state. So when they do that work, we have a city staff member that goes and certifies that, and they are now qualified for that reimbursement from the tax abatement structure. And they're requesting that that continue on a parcel-by-parcel basis, and the same mechanics would apply.
The estimated financial benefit that you've got on that right there, so a lot's changed since 2015, so I, I'm sure that in 2015, the 16 million was from that, that was the number that was used back then. What about this 3.87 million? What is that, is like, I understand what it, it means, but what, is it accurate?
Yes, I think it's accurate. And what that, what this number means, we're focusing on this, the financial benefit today from the program as implemented, that's the calculation of all the parcels that have been, all the parcels that they are redeveloping for which they've qualified for reimbursable costs, coupled with the parcels that are in tax abatement and the expected value of that abatement over the life of each parcel in its tax-abated state. So when you run all of those numbers out, they're calculating they would ultimately be reimbursed only that amount, that 3.87 million, if everything plays out, and you don't approve anything else. This is, this is how the plan would end if you don't approve their, if you don't advance their request tonight.
Okay. And who's helping you monitor this?
Development Services Staff.
Okay.
Okay. Mike Weisenborn is our resident expert on all things John Knox Village.
That's helpful, no? Thank you. Okay, I've got Councilmember Level. Councilmember Level?
Yeah, so it's, piggybacks right off what you said. So just help me understand why the delta between what the estimated benefit was and what the actual is so off?
I think the answer would be they did not redevelop the campus as quickly as they anticipated. They had anticipated more projects being done more quickly. And the other constraint that they have dealt with, and this is where, this is a little complicated to explain, but the county's valuation of the finished product of each redeveloped parcel was higher than expected. And what that means is, in order to qualify, in order to reimburse John Knox Village for the qualifying cost for that parcel, they, using their business judgment, appealed those valuations to lower it down, so it would stretch out over a longer period of time, rather than being in a tax-abated state for a shorter period of time, and they don't realize the same financial benefit. So there's a time constraint associated with the county's valuation and the unexpected higher valuations than they originally projected, coupled with they didn't redevelop the campus as fast as they originally projected. Reasons for that, I suppose we could go deeper and you could ask them, but as you know, in 2020 through '22 or maybe '23, we had COVID, we had inflation, there's a lot of investment that got put on hold, and I think if they were to come up and elaborate, that would be some of the reasons they would explain why this didn't work out as originally.
So if, so if that was set in 2015, and they would have done them all immediately, right?
Or quicker, yes.
Yeah. But it's, but there's still, the total project cost is 105 million, so that's 15 million than what they originally anticipated. But what you're saying is like, so it would be, so let's say there were 100, I don't even know, say there were 100 projects that were slated in this, and if they didn't start them all then, like, let's say if they started all at 100 and they got them all done, like, it probably gets closer to being reimbursed for that original number, but it was.
Yes.
Delayed, or whatever, it took longer to do that. So you can't unlock an incentive until one is taken to a greenfield state. And so if you didn't do them all in a quick timeframe, that would stair-step that abatement that's earned over time.
Yes, I think that's, that's a good summary of what has happened.
Okay. And then.
And then also, the one thing that you're noticing now is their initial estimated cost for the campus versus what they actually did for not all of the campus was substantially higher due to inflationary costs.
Okay. So then that begs the question is like, how confident, like, how do we have confidence in the, in the new request that we wouldn't run into the same issue? So we're just granting more time, essentially, right?
Yes.
So an extra 10 years, that would offset it. So if we ran this out over 10 years, would that, so if we go back to the original plan, if we ran that out over 10 years, would it have got them to that 16.5 million? See, I'm kind of getting at, like, again, it's just like, so we're saying this, and we took a bunch of assumptions before, and it didn't work. You know, how confident are we that just adding the 10 years would work down below and get them to that?
That, that is an unknown. I suppose in the calculation that you have to make in making your decision, that is a risk, knowing that they had originally planned for the entire campus, they've done less than all the campus. Your question is, what's the guarantee they will do the rest of the campus? Unless we have something in the contract that binds them to that, then there is no guarantee, but that's, that's something that we could.
And. And so this new request is, and again, I'm just trying to put it all together, is picking up, like, that's not all new-new? That's picking up things that were still not done from the previous, or this is all new-new?
So here, this is, I'm going to show you this map. And this is another variation on the maps that they've already showed you. So this map, got some glare, but the red is the map I just showed you. And then the blue, that's my attempt, I guess the mouse doesn't work. The blue is my attempt to show all of the remaining projects that they just showed you on their slides. So they itemize in various colors all of the buildings. If you were to draw the boundaries, which I've done in the blue, this is what it would look like. So all of the areas not in blue, that's what, that's what they've either finished or was not part of this program. And their request is to re-initiate the blue area for another 20, up to 25 years for each parcel.
Okay. And then the cost for that-
That didn't really answer his question, though, because he asked what was new-new, like-
Right, like how much is carried over from the previous? Like that wasn't completed in the-
So the answer, the answer, that's a good question, I don't know. And I think that would be, out of all of the property in blue that's remaining to be redeveloped, which of those were in the original plan that didn't happen? And I don't know if it's all of them or less than all of them, I'm not sure.
And then, you know-
We can have the applicant answer that question.
Yeah, come, go ahead.
The 2015 plan was an all-campus plan, so all those properties were included in that plan. It was outlined to redevelop pretty much all the area in red there.
All the way to Greenfield?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there would have been something, I'm guessing, well, like, some of that, some of it was completed.
Let me show you one more map. I'm going to go back to their presentation because this may help.
Is it fair to say that they didn't get to the part in blue?
Yes.
Okay.
Although, let me, so, yes. So the colors that they've shown you here, red, yellow, blue, green, these are the specific location of the projects that they would like to continue with. And I believe, to answer your question, these were all projects that were planned to occur under the 2015 plan but did not.
So, and then go back to your little, three little spreadsheets.
Oh, okay.
So I get, time has changed, but originally thought all of that would be done for 90 million.
Yes.
We got partially through it at $105 million.
Yes.
And now to finish what's remaining, it's $171 million.
Yes.
That's a huge delta.
Yes.
I get, obviously, costs are different in 2025 than 2015, okay. All right, I think that's all I got for now.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you. I have a question for applicant along some different lines here. So as you were going through the buildings and showing them, I've been through quite a few of those, Delivering for Meals on Wheels. And I guess my question is, so you're wanting to, if I understood right, basically tear down and rebuild? Is that correct with those older buildings?
That's correct.
Okay, so my first thought is, when you rebuild, is that going to price out the current residents? Because it tends to be, like, some of those shown, I know are lower-income residents. So what does that look like for them?
The village has a mix of units, some that are higher-end and some that are what we call a leased product. And so we envision we'll always have a leased product that'll be affordable. Right now, our mix is 70% of what we call an entrance fee product and 30% lease. And we envision as we redevelop, there will always be a certain percentage that will be leased and more affordable.
Okay, so some that you will be rebuilding will still be for lower income?
The new product that we'll build will not be for lower income, but as the campus ages, some of the existing product will continue to age, it'll become less marketable. And then that will be turned into a leased product because it will become less marketable over time. But the new product that we're building is for what we call an entrance fee product that is, where there's a deposit to be placed with the unit.
So what will happen to the current residents of those then?
We do relocation services for our residents, so we plan these developments. And that's why the incremental approach to the campus is taking longer. We have to be sensitive to the residents and not disrupt their daily living. And we also have to relocate residents and stop selling into certain projects when we're going to redevelop. So when we know we're going to tear down a building, like an apartment building, we stop selling into that building a year in advance because we don't want to have someone move in and then we have to relocate them. And for the remaining residents that are there, when we're going to start to get ready to demolish it, we do try to find new places on the campus for them.
Okay, so they do get to stay on camp, they're relocating to a different place on campus then?
That's right. And that's part of the reimbursable cost, that's one of the components that's part of the reimbursable cost, is the relocation cost for those residents.
Okay, and they won't be expected to pay higher prices because of the relocation?
Depending on the apartment that they would choose and the size and style. If they choose something similar, it would be similar in monthly fees. But we would pay for the moving cost. That's part of the relocation services we provide since we're asking them to relocate.
Okay, so if you don't have something similar to offer them, what happens in that case? If that's, say they're at the top of their affordability, do they just have to move on somewhere else? Or how do you guys work that out if you don't have an option available for every resident that needs to be?
I'm a little bit more involved in that process with my team. Using the Meadows complex, the 156 units, we notified 104 households that they would have to relocate on our campus. We had a staff person assigned to them. We ordered them by how long they had lived there. And then if they said, "No, I don't want to move now," we put them back on the bottom of the list. We successfully did all of those relocations. That's something we really pride ourselves on, is, it's part of our mission, and we don't want to displace people. We did have some people that, at that time, it was kind of time for them to move to a higher level of care. And then there were two households that chose to move closer to family elsewhere in the metro. So we do a lot of hand-holding. You know, if they had white cabinets in their apartment and they want to move to an apartment that has white cabinets, we'll do that. There have been very few times that people have opted for a bigger unit. So people who lived on the park, it was hard for us to relocate them. So some people got units with garages because they were giving up their park view. So we really try to look at the individual circumstances and find them a good match. And that just changes depending on what our inventory is. That natural attrition that Steve talked about is something that does slow our redevelopment because it's a lot easier to relocate, say, 13 people out of the Lindbergh Building to do the E-Building than to do 45 people of a fully occupied building. So sometimes our planning is based on that occupancy. We always look, for instance, for the Villa program. Where do we have natural attrition? Those people maybe have lived out in one of those homes for 20 or 25 years. They go to a higher level of care. We wait for the one next door to vacate, we tear them both down and turn it into a triplex. So we're really kind of Rubik's Cubing the inventory of our campus to try to meet both the needs to have marketable inventory for the needs of the current market with making sure the needs of our current and long-term, often very long-term residents that are, that those are met to and that they're given that individualized attention.
Okay, okay, yeah, that was just my biggest concern, was just making sure that, you know, we're not pricing out people who, you know, because I know it costs an arm and a leg to live there in general. So those people who can't afford the higher-end luxury are still able to stay in their area.
Right, we generally say we serve the middle three-fifths of the market. So not people on, like, public housing and not people who are, you know, wildly affluent or affluent. So that middle three-fifths. And just, our campus is big enough with so many, you know, we have 1,100 independent living units. With that many units, you're going to have different sizes. Size indicates price point, so it's always going to be a mix.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So there were a couple of items that I was still trying to wrap my head around, this is probably from Mr. Buschak. We talked about some of the issues in terms of not hitting the reimbursables for the first project, where that some things were, had to be done individually, site by site, that they couldn't pool the costs. Can you explain that a little bit better for me?
Sure. So when they redevelop a parcel, the cost, the cost to get the parcel down to a Greenfield State applied just to that parcel. And then the abatement that's received from putting that parcel in a tax-abated state applies only to the cost for that parcel. So, and I'll just make up some numbers. If the cost was $100,000 to get a parcel to a Greenfield State, and the tax, the tax abatement that they receive for that parcel only reimburses them for that $100,000 cost for that parcel. In other words, if the tax abatement for that parcel were $110,000, it would have to stop at $100,000 because those are the costs associated with that parcel. And they can't transfer that reimbursement benefit to another parcel.
So if one is cheaper to get down and one costs a little bit more, they don't have any way to, like, level that out?
Correct. And that is part of their request tonight, to basically not do it on a parcel-by, not limit the value of the abatement on a parcel-by-parcel basis, but instead take all of the value of the reimbursable cost they've accumulated and instead of separate buckets for each parcel, it all goes into one big bucket. And then the abatement that they receive, the benefit of the abatement they receive pay, reimburses them for that cost, that single bucket of cost until they're reimbursed.
Okay, and that would be, I know this isn't like a lot, exactly like other projects we do, but that'd be more similar to another, like, large area that is being developed that it's all, you know, one big bucket that they're pulling out of for these things.
Yeah, I can't really think of any other, there may be one that I'm not thinking of where we limit the reimbursement to a limited geographic area associated with the entire project. This is probably the most limiting incentive program we have, based on what I just described to you, which is the benefit they receive for abatement of a parcel only reimburses them for the costs associated with returning that parcel to a Greenfield State and not any other parcels on the campus.
Okay, but they would still be limited in the eligible reimbursable costs? So even though it'd be a bigger buck that they're pulling out of, you would still have that schedule that says this parcel is worth this much for Greenfield abatement, and this one's worth this much, and you'd have a total abatement cost that they could, so like, if it, if you say in your schedule, it's going to cost them $50,000, that's what the incentive is, and it costs them 200 for some reason, they're still only eligible up to that, that like 50?
Yes, if we use the current contract as the model going forward. Unless we change that aspect of the incentive, then the answer is yes.
Okay, so I guess I, I kind of like that because it gives them incentive to try to be efficient and to, if they're not able to do it, if they're not able to complete the project, they miss out on some incentive, but it's, it just feels like less risk on this side. That it, like, it's sort of like we've talked about with other projects, that if they're successful, then they'll see the benefit of this. If they build the units and get them leased out and get the higher taxes and everything, then they see the most, the most benefit.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Can you put it in your words, though, because I didn't understand that?
Yeah, that's fair.
I don't, like, how is that, how is that beneficial to, and put a, just because you put it all in one bucket, they still have to apply for each parcel?
Yes, so-
To initiate that abatement?
Correct.
So they still get to take their time?
Yes, so if I could recast what I think is your argument. I think your argument is implementing it on a parcel-by-parcel basis incentivizes them to keep the costs down, keep their redevelopment costs down, getting it down to a Greenfield State because they're capped on a parcel-by-parcel basis, as opposed to what, this is, I think, what you're arguing. Instead of taking all of those costs and putting them into a common bucket, and if that parcel doesn't, if the abatement value from that parcel doesn't reimburse them for that parcel, they can sort of borrow from the other parcels, which decreases their incentive to reduce their costs on a parcel-by-parcel basis. I think I just recast your argument.
Yeah, and making sure that the tax abatement goes as far as we're expecting it to, that they don't just remediate a couple of parcels, that it's, they really have to fix each and every single parcel to be able to get their full reimbursement out of it. That if they only do 50% of them, they can't draw down all that benefit. That's kind of what I'm thinking through.
Yeah, I follow, I follow the concern there, and I think that's something that we could address if we move forward. And one other point that I think is relevant, this number down here, estimated financial benefit, you'll see I dropped the footnote here, they're calculating that their actual costs, so if you, every, taking into account everything I just said and putting all of those costs into a common bucket, they're actually saying that that bucket would be $14 million, but their estimation of the value of the abatement that they will receive will only get them to this $12.6 million. So they're not going to be fully reimbursed for all of the potential eligible costs, which is upward of $14 million.
I guess, I guess my only other question is, do we often do this to kind of extend, reconfigure a tax incentive? Because I feel like part of the reason why we put a limit on them is so that eventually it all goes back onto the tax rolls at the full amount, and we see that, that benefit, and there is a timer on it that, you know, they have an incentive to get a push to get through things quickly. Do we do this on other projects? Have we done something like this elsewhere?
Yeah, so, that's a good point. City manager reminds me, we did this in Longview and actually have some of those maps, too. This may actually be slightly helpful for you to understand the concept here. The one place we've done this is, or come close, I suppose, is Longview. So this is the 2003 redevelopment area. This was the TIF plan that was approved in 2003. Fast forward to 2015, about the same time the John Knox Village project was approved by the City Council. A second TIF plan was approved by the city. And the red, I think the red, the red lines are the redevelopment area as of 2015, which is all of Longview that was still not redeveloped as of 2015, which is essentially what they're requesting here. There, I showed you the other maps, they're saying, "We got to half of it, we didn't get the rest." Same with Longview, after 15 years of an attempt with the first TIF plan, there's still a lot that wasn't redeveloped. That's probably the best example.
And at the end of the day, the old, even though we're kind of talking about this as sort of modifying the old program, the old, the old one just goes away, right? It's, it's done, it's dead, this will be a whole new agreement. I mean, other than for the parcels that have already entered their 15-year-
They would not be able to initiate tax abatement under the old plan, but the abatements that had started would continue till the end of their 15-year-
That exists, but for these parcels that they're trying to put together a new project on, the old, the old plan has just expired, they can't, since they don't get to them this month, they can't-
Correct.
Put them in that. So this is saying, "We had this idea, we still think it's a good idea. Would you give us, you know, can we put a new program in place that just-"
Continues.
But really is a whole new thing?
Right, and I would agree with that. So the one, and this is something that I think is important to keep in mind and ties back to my very first point, which was, in 2015, the City Council made a blight finding for the whole campus. The constitutional restriction is 25 years of tax abatement from that finding. And so to initiate a new plan, the City Council is going to have to make a new blight finding of the remaining areas that haven't been redeveloped to qualify under the Missouri Constitution for a 20-year tax abatement. If that's not agreeable to the City Council, then there's, then you're limited to 25 years from the original finding in 2015.
Makes sense. And this new project would only apply to the parcels that haven't been touched yet, to the ones that are still the 50-year-old houses?
Correct.
And it, then again, would not be covered under an existing plan once this one expires?
Correct.
Okay. I guess the only thing that I don't like about it is that it's a reduction in overall number of units that, that makes me sad. I understand that the market is driving larger units. Is there any plan to expand the campus and add more total number of units, that more total people can be served eventually?
We are reducing the number of units, but the square footage actually is very close to what it is because we're taking, for instance, an area by-
I completely understand that. I'm just saying, if, do you expect more people to live in them because they're larger? Like, do you expect to be able to serve more?
With more couples?
Couples, okay.
Would be an example.
Okay.
So in Meadows, I think it was about 1.6 people per unit because those units are the largest apartments we have on our campus. And in the E-Building, the one that's opening in September, those units are a little bit more modest. I think it's like 1.4. I think that's about right.
So I guess overall, at the end of this, do you expect to serve the same number of people, fewer people, more people in the-
We'd love to serve more people. Yeah, there definitely is a need. If you look at the demographic trends, the pace is, we're outpacing projections from like 10 and 15 years ago in terms of the number of age and income-qualified seniors in our primary market area. And there's definitely a need for senior housing. And when you look at that 25-acre swath in- And when you look at that 25-acre swath in green that we talked about for the 2025 plan, we really want to go vertical, try to get a lot of volume, and have more capacity in a more efficient way to deliver the services to the residents. So we also have another dynamic that is folks really rejecting institutional care. So what you're seeing across the country is a downsizing of skilled nursing facilities, and an increase in assisted living, and more services being brought into the home in independent living. So we're already seeing in our new villa product, residents living there longer before they need a higher level of care, or staying there, you know, until they pass away. And because we have home health and hospice and outpatient therapy and the ambulance services, and the Village Helpers, which is just a, like a private duty agency, we're able to really help residents age in place. And so, we, we definitely want to serve people, not only more people, but we want to serve them longer in the most independent setting that we can through our services. And really, that's part of our mission, but it is also part of the new generation of seniors. It's just a very different generation that we're serving now, and that is coming down the pike with the baby boomers, very different than the silent generation or the GI generation, and what they expect, and what they can afford. So, yes, we do want to grow the volume, and we want to keep people independent longer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I guess I'll, two questions for the applicant. Going back to Councilmember Hodges, part of the, I think, David, before I asked this question, part of our greenfield cost of reimbursement is for relocation of the person?
Yes.
That's the simple move, not relocate them to a facility and cover their needs?
Um, I'm not, I'll let them answer.
We, when we ask somebody to relocate, we do try to give them ample time to try to work with them individually, as we mentioned to the previous question. Then we provide packing, moving, and unpacking services. So we tell them they literally can just stay in their recliner, and we'll take care of everything else. And we have some really good services that we use that are really in tune with the special needs that seniors have.
That, the, the reimbursement cost that goes into the greenfield piece is just simply for the move?
For the, well, we consider the move, the packing, moving, and unpacking for relocation. So it's the total cost of relocating the resident from one unit to another unit.
Okay. So while you're still here, going off of what Councilmember Hodges said, so if you have someone living in one of these older units, and as David uses a lot, round numbers, their rent is $1,000. Let's just say, for example, you're moving them to a place, we're covering the reimbursement cost for this packing service, and they stay in their recliner, they're going to a unit that's $1,000, no matter what, because you want to tear this place down.
Unless they chose to move to something bigger.
But you have a unit for them to go to.
That is the plan, to try to relocate everybody on our campus.
Okay. If this was approved, how fast would you start tearing down, let's say, 35 units?
Well, we have a number of opportunities to start building in units that are already vacant. We would, kind of depends on what we would do, but, can you restate your question? I'm sorry, I got lost in my own thought there.
If this, if we agree to do this, to extend this, because you guys are in a hurry, it's got to be done by next month or it's done, if we were to re-up this program, how fast would you tear down 35 units?
What'd you say? Well, we're getting ready to tear down, what, 12 units to make seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, 12 units to make seven, and then six units to make 15.
When you say getting ready?
If the plan gets approved, we're, we're working actively with architects, civil engineers, and surveyors on the projects that we identified in that 25-acre swath, as well as some of the, another phase of villas. So we, we could move pretty quickly on, on, starting on multiple different initiatives that we have identified on the 2025 map.
Okay. I don't want this to sound like a rude question. Why haven't you done this already?
That, that's a very fair question. I think that staff, city staff mentioned that part of it is that we're trying to be sensitive to natural attrition, so we don't have to relocate people. And so, we have to look at units sometimes that are adjacent to one another, and wait for the adequate space to tear them down and replace them. And so, if you want to put it in a colloquial term, I think that perhaps our eyes were bigger than our stomach last time. You know, we were very hopeful about being able to move more aggressively. We also had inflationary costs to incur, and we have the fiscal responsibility not to put the village at too much risk for the current residents who live there, and wanting to make sure that we're being appropriately conservative in taking on risks and redeveloping the campus. And so, just between, you know, natural attrition and construction costs, and our internal capacity to run multiple projects at a time, it just didn't happen as fast as we would have originally hoped. So we've tried to be more realistic with this next plan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You want to, yeah, you can add, that's fine.
One reason the 2025 plan we're looking to get it approved is, we do have our E building that's opening up in September, and that's, we want to activate that in 2025, and we also.
Building?
It's called the Courtyard E building. It's 52 new units, it replaced 35-unit building that was called the Lindberg, it's right off Murray Road there. So we do want to activate that by December. It's going to be opened in, by December, I mean, it's opening in September. And this plan, the current 2015 plan expires in, in August. We also have two phases of the villas, Phase 10 and Phase 11, which is 12 total villas that we want to activate in 2025, but they're just getting completed now, so we can't activate them under the 2015 plan because they're not quite done with all the work. So, we want to activate them under the 2025 new plan.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle?
Oops, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, David. So, when you say they want to extend the 2015 plan, they don't want to extend it from 15 years to 25 years, they want to start over again with the 2025 plan for 25 years?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I was, I kept hearing you say things, and I'm like, hold on, which one are we doing?
Yep, you got it right.
Okay. So, so all the projects that were in the project list for the 15 plan, that did not get completed, like the ones you just talked about, that are going to be done in 2025, but they cannot add them because the time is up. So those, even though they're almost complete, would those go into the projects in the 2025 plan?
Yes.
Okay. So everything that they did not get done in the original plan will go into the 2025 plan?
I'll say yes, however, I, I don't know with certainty that they haven't canceled the project that they were planning 10 years ago. But basically, yes, I think.
Okay.
There's a yes to that. Or, or maybe they restructured a building, it's not the same as what they planned 10 years ago, I'm not quite sure about, you know, parcel by parcel, if that's completely accurate.
Okay. And then, so, then if we go back to the buckets we were talking about with Councilmember Shields, so instead of having all the separate buckets in the 2025 plan for each parcel, we would have one bucket for an entire project list, and we would have that project list ahead of time, correct?
Yes, yep.
And so then, that list, as they got completed and went into, however those are going to work, if it's the same or not, with how it runs through, then they get to start pulling from that bucket of total cost for all of the project list.
Correct.
But they don't get to go over that project list cost.
Correct. And that.
So the bucket runs dry.
And that would be this number here. So if, if we implemented this the same way with respect to that specific point, this number up here, that's a cap. So if they had been enormously successful, and they had incurred costs that were reimbursable, potentially reimbursable above that amount, that amount, the contract capped it. If we do the same thing, this would be the new cap.
Okay. Okay.
Under the new, under the new plan.
Correct. Yes, under the 2025 plan, which is really, you know, I don't even like calling it an extension of the 15 plan.
Fair enough.
Because that just confuses me in my own head, I'm sorry.
Right. So, extension of the concept, but not the plan.
There we go. Okay. And so, but, the 2025 plan is going to have 25 years, first ten at 100, second 15 at 50.
Correct.
Okay. And all the same cost, there, there's not been any change in state statute that would not allow us to use the same costs as the 15 plan?
No.
Okay.
The, the law on that point is the same.
Right. And then the pilot would jump from?
Yeah, and, thank you, I forgot to mention this. So the pilot right now is this number, and the contract specifically says that either make that pilot, or if the taxes that they owe for the entire campus is that number or greater, they just pay the taxes. So we, so the taxing districts always receive this number, and I think more, once the taxes for the campus went above that number. And then they're proposing that this would be the new number. So the taxes for the camp, this sort of proves the point, I suppose. The taxes for the campus this year, all the parcels not in an abated state, would generate this as taxes for the taxing districts. So they are saying that going forward, regardless of the impact to the, regardless of how the tax abatement is implemented, they will always make a payment at least this amount or higher if the taxes they owe for the entire campus goes above that number.
Okay. And so that 748 number is the amount they paid in 2023 taxes?
Probably last year. Yeah, last year.
2024 taxes? Okay. And so, it will always be at least this, if their tax bill says they owe more than that, then it's that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Right. So, so to be clear on that point, if the total taxes that they owe for the entire campus for the parcels not an abatement was 850,000, they would owe 850,000.
Okay. Great. But always at least that much?
Correct.
But not capped at that much?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. On that last part, you said if the taxes, you said the 748 was last year's taxes?
Yes.
And if it goes up to 850, then they pay 850, that's what you said?
Correct.
Okay. And, but you're calling it a pilot?
Yes. Because if they're, let's say, if, if this is approved, and their taxes, for whatever reason, let's say the county drops the valuation, so the taxes they actually owe is $700,000, they would add to that $48,629 to, to achieve this annual pilot. It will always be that, at least that amount.
So, last year's taxes were 748, but they're on an annual pilot of 536.
Correct. And, and what that means is, the contract says they pay the greater of the taxes or the pilot. So if the taxes they, that are due are less, they pay the pilot amount. If the taxes are more, they pay the tax amount.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's, what's that? Go ahead.
I use the term, it's the floor of the pilot, right? It shall, it shall be no less than that. It can, it can be greater than.
Gotcha. Thank you. Let's do big picture for a minute here. We do incentives. When we do incentives, we do it as a partnership. It's, it's an investment for the city. And then, the developer or applicant comes in and tells us, here's, here's why we need it, here's the return on investment. We talk about this every single week, return on investment, return on investment, every single week, ever since I've been sitting here. And so, I see, could you go to their presentation where it talks about the completed? So I see, here's what, go back to the.
Which slide?
Slide nine.
Slide.
So I see the, yeah. So we've got 25 new units, and they demolished some old ones.
53%.
Yeah, 53%.
Of what they project?
Yeah. And then we went, the next page, Mr. Bushak, they did the, eliminated some old homes and added 156 apartments, restaurant and commoneries. You can see these photos. Then we, I thought, I think I skipped one, didn't I?
The villas?
Yeah, skipped, you skipped one, David. Bushak, Mr. Bushak?
Yeah.
Yeah. Then there were also added 59 units of these ranch homes. Are those attached?
Single-family homes, duplexes, and triplexes.
Okay. She said, single-family homes, duplexes, and triplexes. Okay. So these are the, this is the product they're building, they're, they're, they're doing, they're, and they're taking everything into Greenfield. Everything that means they're taking it to, so you can start over. And although there are some other costs in there, such as relocation costs, so. So, we did this before, and, go back to your spreadsheet, we did this before, and it, it wasn't super successful, to say the least. And so we're all up here questioning, what are we doing? Are we going to do the same thing? And you're saying, well, no, we're going to put it all in one bucket this time. There's, they still don't put it in the bucket, they still don't go into abatement until they declare the parcel. So, I mean, okay, it's, we don't want to do this again, like the top two. Like, that's, that doesn't make sense. Like, we need, we are providing certainty with pilots. We are providing a 353. We are, we are willing to invest in actually what is probably one of our greatest organizations in our community. I can't think of a, so, if we're going to do this, we just need to figure out this partnership. I, I just, I don't know, I don't, this is, this is not, right here, this spreadsheet is, is, we, we do this every week. We're pretty experienced now. We know what we're doing. When there's a return on investment, we do it. We invest in our community, we partner with our stakeholders, especially the best ones in the community. But I don't know how to get to, 353 is a great deal for the applicant, but we need some certainty on our side this time around, Mr. Bushak. We need certainty. And we're going to give certainty, we need certainty. We, I, I really don't even know, those little ranches that you're going to demolish? Slide 16. Can you put that up? Like, like, I know that's not cute, but that is a very desirable asset that we need in our communities, so demolishing that scares me. I don't get that. Like, okay, it doesn't have a garage, okay, it's teeny tiny. We're up here, sitting here, we, each week after week, trying to figure out how to do smaller, tinier, and, I don't know, I have a hard time demolishing this. So, but if you want to, we could probably figure this out. We just, Mr. Bushak?
Yeah.
We can't do the same thing we did last time. The money needs to be redirected, and don't tell us that this is a redirection. This is an abatement. And it's an abatement on their timeline, and we need, we need a redirection. I mean, they're, I see they're paying taxes, but, and it doesn't kick in, so they're not, there's some mitigation of risk for them and for us, both. I mean, it's, I understand that, but we got 10 years down the line, and here we are today. Like, a lot of balls dropped here, maybe on our side, maybe on their side, but we're looking at this at the last minute, making a decision on a big deal. And plus, I don't know how much in, they're going to build, I don't know what they're going to build. I see this rendering, which, we usually know what we're approving, specifically, and this is not telling us what they're building. This is saying they're going to tear down this little ranch and a bunch of multifamily, which, they're going to build multifamily, and can you believe it? We're up here saying probably that we're okay with that, because we need, that's the only way to make it economical for them. We get that. I do, at least. I do, at least, I think, I think the bulk of us would say the same thing, so, I'm just concerned about the quick timeline that we have to make this decision for them, something needs to be coming up real fast, I don't know if it's 353 or what. I'm willing to partner, absolutely, I am willing to partner, I'm willing to make it financially viable, but I'm not sure this is, this is the route, or, or, Mr. Bushak, you're gonna have to get real creative with your, with your clauses and contingencies and conditions, and put some time mechanisms on this, and I, we need to know what we're approving, if we're gonna approve this, we need to know what, what we're approving.
Understood. On your two points, the first thing that comes to mind, on the certainty of the schedule, I'll say this, Lee Summit has not traditionally been searching for the right word, aggressive on schedules and contracts for incentives. Some cities that I've worked for in the past, were very adamant that, when a developer indicates they're going to build something on a schedule, they build, and I've used this before in other jurisdictions, if they don't meet that schedule, either they don't receive the benefit, or the, or the benefit lessens. And so, one technique, and this would have to be a negotiating point, and I'm sure they're not gonna agree to anything tonight, but, something that I can include in the negotiations, is something that incentivizes them to complete their projects on schedule, for which they receive maximum benefit, and if they don't match that schedule, then the benefit of this incentive package ratchets down. To be honest, it's sort of a punishment for not matching the schedule, that's one option, or another option would be a very hard schedule, and if you don't complete these projects on this schedule, you do not get the benefit of this incentive, though, those are kind of the, the continuum of where we could go with that issue, and then.
I don't, I don't need, I don't know if I need a, a hard schedule because of other incentives, like, see what you're saying, I need some certainty. I don't know what that, what that really means, exactly, I don't, you know, I know that if we baited property for someone, and it kicked in today, like, we approved abatement, and they don't get to pick and choose when they go into abatement, that, and we did it for 10 years, we would lose out on some money. But, a clock would start.
So, the one thing I will say that, that matches up a bit with where you're going with this issue, is for our Chapter 100 projects, for example, we do have instances where the Chapter 100 plan does contain a schedule like you're thinking, so it specifically says they will start the project this year or next year, and it will, there'll be a two-year build-out, they'll be finished in year three, and, there have been projects where they didn't meet that schedule, they had to come back and get an amendment from you. An example of that was the second phase of apartments for Streets of West Prior, then we had to amend that Chapter 100 plan to extend, and I think that, that gets at your point, that that had a more certain schedule, and they had to come back and request an amendment to change that schedule, I think we could incorporate those features in this incentive package.
I'm open, I'm, I'm, I'm open, I'm not saying no to incentive, I just want, I want to partner, but it's, it just needs to make sense, and I've got council members up here just looking like, what is going on here, you know, this isn't how we usually do it. We're not used to 353s, that's, that's for sure, we do Chapter 100, we do L-CRA, we do TIF, we do, we do a lot of stuff, but we don't do a lot of Chapter 35, this 353, so, I got people that want to chime in, maybe I've said things that they agree or disagree with, so let me get to them, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you. Okay, so first of all, like, this slide right here, it shows that these units are 55% occupied, so, and it sounded like from the developer's presentation, it's just really hard to get these leased up because they don't have the finishes, the layout that people want these days. This, the steps, well, that makes a lot of sense, if you're looking at a senior population. Okay, I mean, I assume you could put in ramps, but it's not, it's not what folks are looking for? And I'm seeing nods, I just, you're not at the microphone, so we can't, we can't, yeah, if you're, if you're gonna talk, you should, please. So, and I guess, is the occupancy rate mostly driven by just difficulty marketing these, or are you intentionally, like you've talked about, trying to have some attrition, so that it'll be easier to demolish these and rebuild them later?
Often, those cottages have been occupied for a long time, a long-term resident, and, so then they need a lot of money input into just the interiors, for example, and then, the ROI isn't there, and so sometimes we do choose to let them sit unless we absolutely need them, it kind of depends on the total number of available units on the campus, but really, we have discounted these units and fixed them up inside, and then they sit, and they don't sell, so we've spent the money trying to fix them up, and then they're just, they want, people want garages, they, you know, they want the bigger kitchens, they want a kitchen island. Some of the things that, you know, that we all have in our homes, they're coming from homes in, in Lakewood and Rain Tree, and they don't want to live in, you know, the interiors of these.
So, with, with the cost of the unit, the cost to rehab it, the money you have to put into it, you can't sell it for less than you've spent fixing it up?
Correct.
So to keep it, keep it at that price that it costs you to fix it up, there's no one that wants to buy it at that price?
Correct.
Right, okay, that, that makes sense, that's why it's blighted, because the amount of money that you pour into it, you just, you can't get back.
Right.
Right, and this incentive is designed to clear blight. So, we're not necessarily, like, like usually when we talk about incentives, we're talking about we're gonna give you a tax break to build something nice that we really like, in this case, the incentive is really just designed to get rid of units that are, that are blighted, that are not economical at this point, and to get it down to a greenfield state, so then you can develop something that the market wants. And the incentive doesn't go towards those construction costs, it's just going towards getting this to greenfield state, which is why we're not seeing as much in terms of full site renderings that we might with a different kind of incentive request, because this is just about getting rid of this unit that you can't sell for what it costs you to fix it up.
Correct.
Okay. To me, I really don't see a lot of risk here, if, if we considered this blighted before, and it sounds like it is, I would love to see it all done quickly and on a schedule, but like, if, if we approve this incentive and it's not, John Knox is the one that loses, like, we, the properties keep paying taxes at the current rate that they're paying taxes, the city doesn't lose anything, we're not giving any incentive until the work gets done, and until the blight gets cleared, which is what the incentive is for, and at that point, then you can go and develop something new that provides housing options to somebody, so, to me, that all kind of makes sense, I mean, would I love to see some more detail, and some more drilling down, and a little bit more information about how exactly this plays out, like, sure, but given what this incentive tool is trying to do, in terms of clearing blight, to give you the opportunity to develop something that people actually want to live in, that kind of makes sense to me.
Thank you.
So I would be okay moving forward and hearing more on what a new plan for this area would look like, because at, at the end of the day, we kind of, we can put a tool in place for you guys, but it's up to you to take advantage of it, and make, and and redevelop the site, and if you don't, it's just, it is what it is right now, and we're not really out anything.
Right.
So that's, am I right, Mr. Bushak, until, until they actually start clearing the blight, it's still generating the same tax revenue that it is right now, it's not really doing anything to the city one way or the other, just, it remains in the state it currently is?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd, I'd be okay with that, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, listen, if we're gonna go further with this, and we're gonna talk about how much things are worth, money-wise, that's a, that's a $200,000 house right there, like, literally, in Lee Summit, Missouri. Maybe, you'd have to sell it for 150, and, and that's if you had to redo every single component, mechanical and everything inside that house. Now, if the roofs need to be replaced, if the foundations are crumbling, then we need a tour. But, that's worth a lot more money than what was just stated, so, that case has to be made, and we cannot be talking about, you can't sell something like that right there. That's just, that's why this, this needs to be a real conversation, we need to find a way to partner, but, if we're gonna get into that kind of analogy, especially when we get into apartments, like, I would like to see newer apartments, I would like to see if they're blighted, I would like to see them replaced, I want to work out a plan, but don't, but we can't be going down a path where we're saying, we can't sell these. That's not a good, we want, we want to upgrade, we want to improve, we want to serve our community better, we want to, I'm, I'm willing to invest as a city, but, it needs to, it needs to make more sense than, than that, and you have to, you'd have to make that case, and I think that'd be, I think that'd be very risky, I don't think they should even try to make that case, it needs to be, how can we partner and make these better? Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely want the applicant to know, I want to say the same thing you said, that we're here to partner, and I, I see a lot of, both sides of the fence, what Councilmember Shields said, and what Mayor Baird is saying, but you're, you've explained to us, I think I counted, I made, poor little Marx, your return on investment on this kind of a property. We need to understand our return on investment, and I think I would consider redoing the plan, because, as Councilmember Lovell mentioned, there's properties that were in this plan from 2015, now it's 2025, they've been in there for 10 years. We add another 25 years, they're gonna be in the same program for 35 years, and nothing's ever happened to them. How, are, are they gonna be in there, and nothing ever happened, because you're still working on your return on investment? I want to partner with you, John Knox is incredible, they're an incredible group to have in our facility, or in our neighborhoods, but I think I need to see some sort of construction plan, and I need to see this outline that, hey, we're gonna partner, we're gonna do this. We've gotta see movement, not wait 25 years and see if something happened, or it didn't happen, based on what's going to work for them, so, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Lovell.
So what is their, what is our timeline here on this, like, do we have a date?
Mr. Bushak.
Like, when this expires, or?
The, the current plan, the last point that they could place anything into an abated state is next month.
Okay. So, we have a little bit of time?
Well, can we extend that a year, and, and, and then give them another year, so that we can work out a real plan, like, like, a real agreement, like, as in, so that this doesn't, figure out whatever it is, so that you don't have to rush this, this next, give them time.
Yes, that could be done, that would require an amendment. It's doable.
That, that's part of, part of this, because I think, as we've all stated here, we love John Knox Village, it's a great partner. Our expectation, our bar is pretty high, as we view and, and review developments with incentives, we see beautiful drawings, we see, we see a lot of things that kind of show us how the plan's gonna go, we have financial analysis against the construction budgets that people put before us. And so what we don't want to do, is like the mayor said, is run into the same situation here, that, down the road, and kick the can down the road, and so, like, for me, you know, that's, that's getting more in the weeds on the numbers, and what's gonna be accomplished, because I, you know, I ran the numbers, and, you know, of the original plan, 53% of the projected units being demolished were demolished in this first, first go-round. 65% of the projected new units constructed, constructed, were actually constructed, but the budget was 116% of the total budget to get it done. And so what that says is, it's not a, you know, a shame on you guys or anything like that, but as we partner and we grant incentives, is we need more certainty in what's being put before us. We need more certainty in the plan that's gonna be executed, we don't want to do anything to hinder their ability to go forward and do this, there's a lot of components to taking on these types of investments, I'm sure there's, there's some financing and things like that that go with it, but, for us, it's, you know, and for me personally, it's, you know, we need more certainty in how this thing is going to be accomplished, because it did not get, work out the first time, and what I don't want is initiate something, and we're all dead and gone, and 25 years later, they're back here with, with something else, you know, that, that has, has to be fixed, or has to be rendered. We want them to achieve the benefits, we want to remove blight, we want, but, but I need confidence in these numbers, and, and I don't know how they came before us last time, and I'm not sure how they, they've been put together this time, but, but I'll, I'll go back to just kind of agreeing with the mayors, like, we want to do something, want to partner, we just need more certainty and understanding of, of, of how these numbers were arrived at, construction timelines, drawings, renderings, whatever it might be, and then also, you know, what is, what is our, what is our cost from, from giving this up, right? So, you know, what are we foregoing, which is okay, but what do we gain, too, I mean, they've got a lot of employees, they service a lot of our, our people, so, just like we do with other developments, we get all of that information, we feel very comfortable with it, and we go into a partnership, and we make a great decision for this city and for John Knox Village. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't want this to sound confrontational, please, don't take it this way, but, so, I, I have clients that go to, they sell their homes and they go to John Knox Village, and a lot of of my clients have to wait to get into, to John Knox Village, it's, 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 there's a long waiting list, from what I've understood. So, when I, just kind of going along with what Mayor Baird said, and I'm looking at this little unit, and I think it's a cute little unit, it, it needs a little bit of landscaping up, upgrade there, but I, I just wonder, so I guess I just wonder, why would, why would we want to tear down the units, I mean, surely there's some people out there that that would be a marketable property for them to own? Maybe it's a situation where, because it needs more work, or it could maybe be updated some in the, in, in the inside, that, you know, it would be more affordable for some other people, I don't know, but there's, there, there's a lot of, I feel like there's a lot of uncertainty as well. Again, John Knox Village is an amazing area, it's a wonderful area to help our seniors be able to have homes to live in, have beautiful places to live in, and the amenities and all, but, I guess I would just say that maybe we need to take a little bit harder look at at what we would be rebuilding, and is it, is it, is it necessary to do that altogether? I, again, I, I'm just not, I'm, I'm not convinced, I will just say, I just feel, don't, I don't feel convinced that the plan is, is, is comprehensive enough, or clear enough to make me feel comfortable with just moving ahead. I, I would like for us to find something that we can move ahead on, but this one just doesn't feel like, for me, that I can, so, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Bushak, maybe you can help me with this one. I think, where I'm at, especially seeing this cute little cottage, that yes, it may need updated, and add a ramp or whatever, where I struggle with saying, these are all blighted, is they've allowed them to become that way, so, are we setting the expectation, I know this doesn't just apply to John Knox, so this isn't a personal attack at all, but even in other things, it's like, but with them, they're, they've been the sole owner of these, because I know we also discussed, like, strip malls, we need to, but they go through continued, different owners, and then some people go, they sell them, and all of that, but with this, I just struggle, because it's been the same owner, and they've allowed them to become blighted, and focus more on new, and let the old just become older, and then we can allow them to come and say, oh, well, it's blighted, and we want to just tear down and build new, so, I guess, I, I, I don't understand that concept. We reward, we reward the lack of upkeep.
That's a, a good point, that's something that I debated whether I would discuss it or not, and so I didn't in my initial opening remarks, but who brought the blight to the city is always the question, it's obviously something that you have to wrestle with when you're faced with these type of decisions. So, think of all the other instances where you've dealt with this sort of question. Often, it is a factor, who caused the blight, so if you have a situation where the request is tax abatement or some incentive to rehab an age shopping center, who allowed it to get aged, who allowed it to deteriorate, there's really two scenarios usually, one is the party that allowed it to deteriorate, is before you making the request, and a second scenario is somebody just came in, bought this asset last year, and now they'd like to refresh the shopping center, and they didn't cause the blight. In this situation, this is something that was a point of discussion 10 years ago, I can't recall to what extent, but looking back at the blight study, the focus was the age and the obsolescence, outmoded design, and then deterioration, and, and so I'm not a proponent or opponent to this request, this is, they have the burden of persuasion, if we move on to a public hearing, but I think their argument would be it's the age and the obsolescence, the fact that this building was built in 1975, and it just doesn't match modern amenities, and the hallways, and et cetera, everything that they've talked about, that's the basis for their request, as opposed to, we just let all these buildings fall apart.
But, I feel like the components that would be, but they didn't update, like, there's plenty of people here, and they're some who have older homes than that, who update their homes to keep it with the times, or remodel, or whatever, so, how is that not taken into account, that the lack of doing that is also, because I mean, that's, that's an option?
I think this is the point where I understand your argument, and the answer to that, I think they would have to address that for you. It sounds like the specific question is, be more specific with me, tell me why this structure you think is blighted, and this was a focus 10 years ago, is it that you've allowed it to deteriorate, or it's just obsolete, and it needs to be reconstructed because it doesn't, for all the reasons they, they've advanced tonight, it doesn't have the modern amenities, doesn't have the space, and it's not sellable to a larger portion of the market, I don't know, I'm, I'm sort of repeating everything they've said, but, this is the point that they would have the burden of persuasion on.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, can you, can you, maybe it's, maybe we need to give them two years, I mean, a year is pretty fast. I mean, that's, that's extending 100% for two years, and they can make some more improvements. There is, there's a 10-year activation timeline. Yeah, can we, can we extend that? And then, I, I don't And then, I, I don't care, extend the 100% for two years, too, so that they're in the same position, and we can work out something. This is...
I think everything you're saying is an option. I'd have to think a little bit more about when we reach year 11, I'm not quite sure if you're even asking that. So, but I think everything you're speaking about, and you're asking for, is doable. Just the mechanics.
You know, I, I'm all for, we, we do incentives where we help commercial properties improve their properties. We do, we do CIDs all the time, so, there's, there's ways to do this. I'm willing to extend this, probably there's a couple more people that are willing to maybe do the whole new thing, or repeat all this over again, but with conditions. But, they've got, they've got a great crew there, they've got attorneys, they can, they can put something forth with you. Bring it back as quick as you can, so that they don't lose out on, you know, on the current status, if possible. And if we have to make a decision on the 25-year, we'll have to make a decision, but it needs some other conditions and terms, I think, so.
I, I understand what your feedback is, and I suppose the next step would be for me to talk with the applicant, gain their understanding of your feedback tonight, and see if we can reach middle ground to accomplish what you're saying, which is a limited extension for you to possibly consider their more full request.
Yeah. Extend the time that they get to initiate it, plus you'd have to extend the 100%, so that they don't go into the 50%, 50% category, because that, that's what happens next, right?
That's the one thing I need to check under the statute, if we can go to something higher than 50% in year 11. Which may be relatively academic in the big picture, given the scope of what we're talking about, but I understand your comments.
We set the pilot, though.
Correct.
We could set it, well, I'll let you...
I see what you're saying.
We set the pilot, we can set it wherever it's, wherever it needs to be.
That would be another technique to accomplish what you're saying, which is...
That's terrible, I'm not, I'm saying that in public, but...
Adjust the pilot, yep.
Well, I mean, it's the reality. Okay. Do you guys want to say anything else? Like, as far as, just, I think we're searching, we need help here. We, we, we really are sincere. I know this council, they want to partner, but...
I appreciate the time. I would, I think the two-year, maybe extension, would give us time. So, right now, it's, you know, the plan's ending, but if we have two more years to activate projects under this, and come up with what you're asking for, that would give the village time to respond, and, and get a, a full plan.
Okay. You guys are going through a lot of transition right now, too, so, new CEO, or whatever, executive director, what's your title?
President.
President, new president. Two years would be, you, you could put a plan together. Okay. Please.
You know, I think, I think also when we did the plan in 2015, you know, Steve and I were not with the organization, so not really sure what the ask was, or the logic behind basically the whole cap at that time. So I think if you give us some time, and come back with a lot, we do have a lot of specificity with what we're trying to accomplish, really over the next few years, so we can, we can...
Well, probably a different vision than you had in 2015, and at this point, so, share the vision.
Yep.
And, that would be good for us. So if we can get them time, let's, let's do that, Mr. Bushak. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thanks for being, taking care of our citizens. Okay, proposed ordinances forwarded from committee, Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill number 25-128?
I move to second reading Bill number 25-128, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement to provide certain dispatch services to inner-city fire protection district by the city of Leesumet, Missouri.
Thank you, I have motion to move to second reading Bill number 25-128 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes 8-0, Councilmember Hodges, would you please read for adoption?
I move for adoption, Bill number 25-128, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement to provide certain dispatch services to inner-city fire protection district by the city of Leesumet, Missouri.
Thank you, we have motion to adopt Bill number 25-128 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes, it's adopted, 8-0, thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read Bill number 25-129?
I move to advance second reading Bill number 25-129, an ordinance approving the dual award of RFP number 2025-021 to purchase underground locating services on an as-needed basis for a one-year term with up to four one-year renewals to Gridhawk LLC, Integrity Locating Services LLC, and authorizing city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-129 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes 8-0, Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill number 25-129, an ordinance approving the dual award of RFP number 2025-021 to purchase underground locating services on an as-needed basis for one-year term with up to four one-year renewals to Gridhawk LLC, Integrity Locating Services LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute the same for the city.
Thank you, I have motion to move to, motion to adopt Bill number 25-129 by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Funk, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes, or it's adopted, 8-0, thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 25-130?
Thank you, I move for second reading of Bill number 25-130, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a service agreement with InfoTech Research Group, an anticipated amount of $106,805.61 to be spent between now and July 2026, to enable the city to obtain a guided workshop training and annual subscription for professional services related to data governance and technical contracts, and further authorize the city manager to execute any subsequent documents necessary to obtain the same services for FY27 in the same amount, subject to the FY27 budget.
Thank you, I have motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-130 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Goes to second reading, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, and I move for adoption of Bill number 25-130, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a service agreement with InfoTech Research Group, an anticipated amount of $106,805.61 to be spent between now and July 2026, to enable the city to obtain a guided workshop training and annual subscription for professional services related to data governance, technical contracts, and further authorize the city manager to execute any subsequent documents necessary to obtain the same services for FY27 in the same amount, subject to the FY27 budget.
Thank you, I have motion to adopt Bill number 25-130 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted, thank you. Councilmember Rader, would you please read Bill number 25-131?
Yes, Mayor. I move to second reading Bill number 25-131, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the order form for the subscriptions worth workaday, for a not-to-exceed amount of $250,689 in FY26, to include software modules, enabling the city to obtain the strategic sourcing expert workaday contract lifecycle management contracts, intelligence, and five custom AI models, and further authorizing the city manager to execute any subsequent documents necessary to obtain the same services for the term of the main subscription agreement, subject to the fiscal year's budget.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-131 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Shields, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Rader, would you please?
Yes, yes, Mayor. I, I move to, for adoption, Bill number 25-131, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute the order form for the subscriptions with the workaday for a not-to-exceed amount of $250,689 in FY26, to include software modules, enabling the city to obtain the strategic sourcing expert workday contract lifecycle management contracts, intelligence, and five custom AI models, and further authorizing the city manager to execute any subsequent documents necessary to obtain the same services for the terms, for the term of the main subscription agreement, subject to the fiscal year budgets.
Thank you, I have motion to adopt Bill number 25-131 by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read Bill number 25-132?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to advance to a second reading, Bill number 25-132, an ordinance amending Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 1, in general, Section 4 through 13, dispensing alcoholic beverages, issuance of liquor license near school or church of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Leesumet, Missouri.
Thank you, we have motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-132 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Yes, Councilmember Rader.
Thank you, Mayor. So, it's almost 10 o'clock, in the interest of time, I, I would like to propose a substitute bill to the 25-132, but would it be possible, since it's getting late and we're going into closed session, to push that to the next agenda? Because I'm guessing that this discussion will take some time.
Mr. Head?
I'll voice within the power of the council to table an item to the next meeting, if that's, if that's your choice.
Do you want to, after we read a, after we get a second, do I just have Councilmember Rader, motion to table?
That's correct, a motion to table takes precedence over other motions.
All right. Councilmember Rader, you want to motion to table?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table Bill number 25-132 to the next meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
There we go. We have a motion by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Pryor, I believe, was it Councilmember Pryor? And, motion to table, end of discussion on a motion to table. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does get tabled, 7-1. Councilmember Funk, would you please read Bill number 25-133?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to second reading, Bill number 25-133, an ordinance approving award of RFQ 2025-054 to Walter P. Moore and Associates, Inc., and to Wilson &amp; Company, Inc., for on-call professional engineering services for transportation, stormwater, and structural design and engineering studies, and authorize the city manager to execute individual agreements of the same for a period of one year with four possible one-year renewal options.
Thank you, I have motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-133 by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Funk, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill number 25-133, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ 2025-054 to Walter P. Moore and Associates, Inc., and to Wilson &amp; Company, Inc., for on-call professional engineering services for transportation, stormwater, and structural design and engineering studies, and authorizing the city manager to execute individual agreements of the same for a period of one year with four possible one-year renewal options.
Thank you, I have motion to adopt Bill number 25-133 by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Shields, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Carlisle, would you please read Bill number 25-134?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move Bill number 25-134, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a surface transportation block grant program funding agreement between the city of Leesumet, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, related to the public improvement project designated as federal project number STBG 3338, open print 406, closed print Lakewood Way, complete streets improvements, Woodschapel Road to Bowlin Road, within the city of Leesumet, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you.
Be second read.
Oh, thank you, we have motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-134 by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Shields, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does go to second reading, Councilmember Carlisle, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move Bill number 25-134, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a surface transportation block grant program funding agreement between the city of Leesumet, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, related to the public improvement project designated as federal project number STBG 3338, open print 406, closed print Lakewood Way, complete street improvements, Woodschapel Road to Bowlin Road, within the city of Leesumet, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same, be adopted.
Thank you, I have motion to adopt Bill number 25-134 by Councilmember Carlisle, seconded by Councilmember Pryor, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimous, it's adopted, thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill number 25-135?
Thank you. I move to second reading, Bill number 25-135, an ordinance approving a transportation alternatives program agreement between the city of Leesumet, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, related to the public improvement project designated as federal project number TAP 3448402, southeast Douglas Street, Blue Parkway to Fourth Street, within the city limits of Leesumet, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you, we have motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-135 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Pryor, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading, Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of Bill number 25-135, an ordinance approving a transportation alternatives program agreement between the city of Leesumet, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, related to the public improvement project designated as federal project number TAP 3448402, southeast Douglas Street, Blue Parkway to Fourth Street, within the city limits of Leesumet, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you, I have motion to move to, move for adoption, Bill number 25-135 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Shields, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 25-136?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, Bill number 25-136, an ordinance approving transportation alternatives program funding supplemental agreement between the city of Leesumet and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, related to the public improvements project designated as federal project number TAP 3001015, ward road improvements from Blue Parkway to O'Brien Road, with city limits of Leesumet, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 25-136 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion. Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, I now move for adoption of Bill number 25-136, an ordinance approving a transportation alternatives program funding supplemental agreement between the city of Leesumet, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, related to the public improvements project designated as federal project number TAP 3001015, ward road improvements from Blue Parkway to O'Brien Road, within the city limits of Leesumet, Missouri, and authorizing the city manager execute, sorry, authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
All right, thank you. Motion to adopt Bill number 25-136 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle, discussion. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill's adopted unanimously. It looks like all the committees have been super busy still, we just never slow down in Leesumet. Well done, how about committee reports? Are you exhausted? Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, public, as you can see, Public Works Committee meeting, committee met yesterday afternoon, and we advanced three grant agreements that were on the agenda tonight, as well as an on-call engineering contract for the transportation and stormwater projects. The committee, we also continued discussions regarding stormwater utility, and we considered funding alternatives, property tax, sales tax, and user fee, and we weren't a big fan of the property tax. Initially going into it, I thought I was really going to like the user fee, but after hearing the presentation, I think we all agreed that we really liked the sales tax, and so, they're going to bring more information to us in August, regarding all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, just a quick recap of our CDC meeting. Ed Rucker with the Law Department led a presentation in coordination with the Police Department regarding potential updates to panhandling, loitering, and soliciting ordinances, and we will also be bringing up public intoxication, changing that ordinance, or drunkenness in public, and then a prowler ordinance as well. So we're excited to get those discussion points on CDC. And then also, we discussed regarding potential ordinance changes related to the World Cup, and so that was an interesting conversation, and staff brought a really great presentation that listed several items that they advised maybe no change, and we agreed as well, but there's also some that we are going to discuss more in depth, like short-term rentals and[1754.43] stuff like that. So very productive meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. Legislative and governmental met yesterday as well. We discussed the reports you guys heard tonight, except for it wasn't complete because there were still things signed yesterday. We also discussed the possibility of having federal lobbyists and asked staff to come back with more information on what that might cost us, really what we would go after, and a few more details regarding that. So that was it. Thank you.
So it's on the table. We'll have more discussions about that. We do need to be ready for, to gulp when you hear about how much it might cost us, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Where are we? Staff roundtable? Or no, council comments? Council comments. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. So last Tuesday, we had a developer come before us that kind of bashed another developer, and I just wasn't crazy about that, especially because the particular developer that he bashed has done a lot for our community. So I just kind of wanted to highlight a few things, good things, that the developer that he bashed has done to our community, for our community. He developed Winterset, New Longview, and Arborwalk, all three of which are highly-desired neighborhoods within our city. So he's done a lot of good, so I just didn't like the bashing. Thank you.
Thank you. He's done a lot of philanthropy too. A lot of nonprofit, raised a bunch of money.
He has. Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. No other council comments, so we'll go to staff roundtable.
Thank you, Mayor. We've provided a written staff report on our efforts, kind of a status update on our efforts on the solid waste contracted services on the residential front. So we wanted to put that in writing, just so you all had that awareness of where we're at in executing on the, the public engagement plan. And I know we're working with all of you to schedule district informational meetings for those. So a lot of efforts in place behind the scenes, written report. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us.
I just want to give you some feedback to make sure your staff is, like, I know that you're doing public engagement, but from the few things I've seen online, social media-wise, like, it's been a lot more balanced or openness than it was when you guys did this the first time.
Last time around.
And I think it's because we're not the first to the market to do this. There's other cities, there's other, there's so many HOAs that have, so anyway, I've just seen, I've been surprised at how much more open people are about having the conversation. So hopefully that, you guys will see in that and you'll tell us what your experiences are.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, boy. All right. I guess I have to ask somebody. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Pursuant to section 610119a, security measures, global positioning systems, GPS data, investigative information, investigative surveillance techniques of any public agency responsible for law enforcement or public safety that if disclosed has the potential to endanger the health or safety of an individual or the public. D, operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans developed, adopted, or maintained by any public agency responsible for law enforcement, public safety, first response, or public health for use in responding to or preventing any critical incident which has potential to endanger individual or public safety or health. Financial records related to the procurement or expenditures relating to operational guidelines, policies, or plans purchased with public funds shall be open. When seeking to close information pursuant to this exception, the public governmental body shall affirmatively state in writing that disclosure would impair the public governmental body's ability to protect the security or safety of persons or real property, and shall in the same writing state that the public interest in nondisclosure outweighs the public interest in disclosure of the records. Therefore, I move for a closed session.
Second.
Thank you. Nice, like, tonight, I'm really glad Councilmember Shields is on this council. I'll tell you what. I have a motion by Councilmember Shields, and a second by Councilmember Hodges to go